I'd like to call to order the regular formal meeting of the Iowa City City Council for September the 17th, 2019. Roll call, please.
Cole.
Here.
Mims.
Here.
Salee.
Yeah.
Taylor.
Here.
Teague.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Throgmorton.
Here. Well, welcome to all of you to your city hall. It's great to see all of you and it's always fun to see a large number of people show up. I have no idea exactly what you're going to want to speak about or do, except for these people over here. I know what they have in mind. It'll be fun when they have their turn at bat, so to speak. All right, so our first item is proclamation, or item two is proclamations. I have three proclamations to read tonight. The first has to do with National Hispanic Heritage Month. So, whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month is an opportunity to recognize the contributions of Hispanic Americans and to celebrate Hispanic heritage and culture, and whereas each year the federal government and local governments observe National Hispanic Heritage Month as the period from September the 15th to October the 15th by recognizing and celebrating the histories, cultures, and contributions of American citizens whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America, and whereas September the 15th is significant as a starting date for Hispanic Heritage Month because it is the anniversary of independence for the Latin American countries of Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. In addition, Mexico and Chile celebrate their independence on September the 16th and September the 18th respectively. And whereas Latinx have made innumerable contributions to the Iowa City community, and it is important for the city to recognize and celebrate the diverse histories and cultures of the Latinx population, and whereas the Latinx community is integral to our city, with business owners and residents alike who are proud to be a part of the Latinx community but hope for greater visibility, recognition, and representation, and whereas the city of Iowa City continually strives to foster mutual understanding and respect among all our people, and whereas this observance affords special opportunities to become more knowledgeable about Hispanic heritage and to honor the many Hispanics who have contributed to the progress of Iowa City, the state, and the nation. Now therefore, I, James A. Throgmorton, Mayor of Iowa City, Iowa, do hereby proclaim September the 15th, 2019 through October 15th, 2019, to be National Hispanic Heritage Month. I think we have someone who's here to accept this proclamation, Jessica Fertig. All right, our second proclamation has to do with Play Evolution. If you have not been watching city council meetings on TV, you have no idea what Play Evolution's all about, but we do.
Okay, is everybody ready to play?
Hey, Joe.
Sure.
Everybody ready to play?
Yeah. Woo!
Mayor wants to do the proclamation.
Yeah, maybe I can do that first. You know how this works, Joe. Joe is a city council person, you know.
We're gonna come over to Corralville, Joe.
Okay, so proclamation. Whereas a play deficit exists in our society, a very real decline in unstructured play which has critical implications for the health of our community, and whereas children's media usage has soared in the past two decades, with the average American child engaging in seven hours, 38 minutes of media use each day, and whereas play is critical to children's healthy brain development and building active, healthy bodies, and whereas play allows children to use their creativity while developing their imagination, dexterity, and physical, cognitive, and emotional strength, and whereas unstructured play allows children to learn how to work in groups, to share, to negotiate, to resolve conflicts, and to learn self-advocacy skills, and whereas play helps children develop new competencies that lead to enhance confidence and the resiliency they will need to face future challenges, and whereas play is just as important for adults, especially in the workplace, keeping one functional under stress, refreshing the mind and body, triggering creativity and innovation, increasing energy and helping to prevent burnout, and whereas play is so important to optimal child development that the United Nations High Commission for Human Rights has recognized it as a right of every child, and whereas above all, play is simple joy that is a cherished part of childhood. Now therefore, I, James A. Throgmorton, Mayor of Iowa City, Iowa, do hereby proclaim September the 10th through the 29th, 2019, a time for Play Evolution, and encourage all residents of all ages to support and promote the idea that unstructured, unplugged, unlimited play is a critical component of healthy development for community members of Iowa City. All right, Jill.
Congratulations. Okay, everybody got your kazoo's? Okay, we're gonna have to have a little kazoo lesson. We're going to not blow it, and we're going to hum it. We're gonna use the big end. Everybody try it. I don't see all of you having a kazoo. You need a kazoo? Yeah, okay.
Kazoo's all ready.
Yes, that's what we're talking about. Guys, all ready? Did you practice?
We're ready.
Working on it.
With him, he gets another sound. Yeah.
I'm getting nothing. I don't have one.
Next, your training?
No.
I got one.
I tried, I tried.
You make it go? Okay. So, our song this evening is in honor of our mayor, Mayor Throgmorton. We understand you're not running for another term, so we want to send you out with one of your favorite Bob Dylan songs.
Should I leave when this is over?
Now, Play Evolution goes through the 29th. So, we're gonna do Blowing in the Wind. Everybody know that song?
But don't blow, hum.
We're humming in the wind.
That's right.
All right, are you ready? One, two, ready, go. Okay. I'd like to introduce Jeff Capps. He is the new executive director of the Iowa Children's Museum, who partners with us for the Play Evolution and is a really big part of things. And he's gonna give us a couple comments about play.
All right. Thank you, Jill, and just thank you, thank you, Mayor and council for inviting us to celebrate the Play Evolution. We think this is so critically important, so we're going all around Johnson County this month, and just remind everybody about the importance of play, so you heard a lot about that in the proclamation. And I just want to share a couple of thoughts with you about what we are here to do. One of my favorite people is Fred Rogers, a Fred Rogers fan. So, he talked about the importance of play to children. He said, "We often talk about plays if it's a break from serious learning, but for children, play is serious learning. Play is really the work of childhood." And I'm gonna add onto that and say, we all should be thinking about the importance of play in our lives as well. How many people said, "Oh, you know, I'll play." Ed says, "You know, I'm too busy, I'm too busy doing all my important stuff. I gotta, I'll wait to play." No, we play that, right? Make time for play, the importance of play, and you think about all the great things that have happened in this community, all the great things that have happened throughout the history of mankind, the progress that we've made. It oftentimes comes from people playing and experimenting and trying different things and playing in their work. So, I would challenge you to say, don't put off play. Let's make play an important part of our lives, let's carve out time to do it, and make it an important part of how we relate to each other in community as well. We see that happen at the Children's Museum each and every day, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to be a part of that. And I'd say, our communities can be so much stronger if we foster that and make that an important part of what we do. So, playevolution.org is the website, and we've got all sorts of great activities through the 29th, as the proclamation said, so please take a look at that, find something you can plug into, but you guys are already part of the Play Evolution because you played the kazoo choir. So, yeah, first step is completed, find something else to engage in, and spread the joy of play, spread the importance of play. Again, this is about learning, this is about growth, this is about community, and we thank you for your time tonight. We've got one more thing we're gonna do as a team, and I'd like to again thank Jill Dodds, Councilwoman from Corralville, her husband Jeff, and Sarah Glenn with the Corralville Public Fiber, and the whole committee at Play Evolution that's helped to make this possible throughout the month. So, Jill, take it away.
We're gonna teach you our cheer, and then it's pretty easy. It's one, two, three, four, imagine, create, discover, explore, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, let the Play Evolution begin. All right, are we ready?
All right.
One, two, three, four, imagine, create, discover, explore, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, let the Play Evolution begin. All right, rock, roll, sing. Look at all the cool stuff we're doing. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Great saying, Jill, thanks.
Thank you.
Oh, I can't do that. Got another item to go with. So, yeah, item 2D is our last proclamation. It's Climate Action Day.
Mommy!
This one's a short one. Whereas the United Nations has designated September the 21st, 2019, as an International Day of Peace Climate Action, and whereas this Day of Peace Climate Action is relevant to Iowa City and other communities of this nation and worldwide, and is for all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds, and whereas it is important for the people of Iowa City to join the citizens of the world in taking action individually and collectively to address the climate crisis that is upon us. Now therefore, I, James A. Throgmorton, Mayor of the city of Iowa City, Iowa, do hereby proclaim September the 21st, 2019, as a Climate Action Day in Iowa City. So, John, are you here? John, yeah, there you go.
Peace Day was established by the United Nations 28 years ago. The International Day of Peace shines a light on the universal aspiration for peace within the one human family. Peace Day provides a globally shared day for all humanity to uplift unity and diversity and to commit to building a culture of peace. This year, 2019, spotlights the theme, Climate Action for Peace. This theme draws attention to the importance of combating climate change as a way to protect and promote peace throughout the world. This week in September, comments on the peaceful climate change battle. Yesterday morning, a climate awareness class from City High School joined members of the Hundred Grannies in making posters for this Friday's Iowa City Climate Strike. It will be marching from the city hall to the pente crests. This poster making was filmed by the NBC National Network, and they did this on the front porch of our house on Dearborn Street. It will be on national television on Thursday and Friday. On Wednesday, September 18th, tomorrow, Iowa City Climate Advocates will present the Energy, Innovation, and Carbon Development Act to the Johnson County Board of Supervisors. And Friday is the Iowa City Climate Strike, and that's where the students developed the science for, and they will have, getting out of school early to do this march. Then finally, on the 21st, is the International Day of Peace on Saturday. Thank you.
Great, thanks, John. Okay, let's move on to the consent calendar, which is items three through eight. Could I have a motion to adopt the consent calendar as presented or amended?
Both.
Second.
Moved by Swy, seconded by Cole. Discussion.
I have very, I just wanna, I have three items I wanna talk about, it very brief. Starting with 6H, agreement with Public Space One. I guess from the letter from Jan, I just wanna make sure that if Jeff can talk a little bit about the letter, and also, he asked that the council to allow the agreement to continue by signing off on the new resolution with ZIM. I just wanna make sure we are doing that, and for the public information, you know.
Yes, I think John is supporting the measure you're taking tonight. Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, and we are, we as a council are gonna agree to that, that's not a problem, right?
It's part of the consent counter, so if we just vote on the consent counter, it will be approved.
Yeah, did you respond to him because I see the letter, yeah.
I actually had questions about 6H. I was gonna pull it from the consent calendar.
Wait, discuss it now.
So, we can discuss it now?
If you're free.
All right, great. So, the Public Space One, how long is this mortgage agreement?
How long is the mortgage? I don't think it has an expiration. It's a mortgage on the property, but we don't require payments on it, zero interest, and it's not, they're not making payments on it.
So, the city's making payments on it?
No, no, the city provided, at the time, PATV that money to secure the space, and we kept a mortgage on the property, so if they were ever to send it, ever to sell the property or cease to exist, that we would get that investment pack.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, the second one is 8A and 8F, letter from Mary Gravitt. I just wanna thank Mary because she's really doing a lot of good work to support all city residents, and I guess when I say that, Mary, she ride the bus, she's seeing who's getting to the bus and getting off from the bus, the condition of everything, and she really pay a lot of attention to this. That's why I would like to ask city manager if he can include the information from Mary in bus shelter location planning.
Yes, we've, Darian Nagel-Gamm, who's the director of our Transportation Services Department, I know has responded to Mary in recent days and given her an update on the location of the shelters that have already been installed, and then what's in store for round two. We have another round that's going to be installed here shortly. The rest of the shelters are on hold until we have a better understanding of what the new routes would look like from our transit study, so we went ahead and focused on those areas that we feel very confident that the bus routes are not gonna change, or that we'll have some type of bus route on even after the routes shift. So, Mary has that information. If council would like an update, we can provide that to you in a future information packet.
Okay, last one is 8K, and you know, yes, Paula's suggestion, I guess, did you have your response to her? She's really paying also a lot of attention to what going on there, and you can respond.
Paula Swygarden, yes. Tracy Heightshue, I don't know, Tracy's, she's, I think she may have been in Des Moines today. The NDS staff has been in discussion with some of the neighbors. We have gone out to the property. The fence that was built is compliant, it's six feet, which was required from the Board of Adjustment, so we can't go back and force them to build a taller fence. I know the staff is looking at the question of whether they extended the fence to the full extent that they were required to, and if we find that they didn't, then we will have them extend that fence a little bit further. We also had them put some cutoff shades on their lights to help dampen that, but again, I think the height of the fence is the primary concern for the neighbors, and we don't have the ability to go back. That, the six-foot specific fence was, that was a regulation that they complied with.
Tracy's here. Thank you.
Anything else, Tracy, that I missed there?
We are, I didn't catch all everything you said, but we are working, there is, they have to extend the fence to the property until the right of way. However, when they got a wider curb cut, we're looking at the landscaping requirement, so we're working through those issues now, but we expect some type of resolution, but it'll only be a six-foot fence, because that is what the special exception required.
Okay, thanks. That's it.
I also wanted to talk about 8K, because it's kind of in my neck of the woods there. I was sad to see Paul's Discount go after so many years, but I was pleased to see the fairly quick turnover in the new businesses. But after receiving these emails, I did drive through the neighborhood in the evening, and I think not only because of the fence, but those lights are very, very bright, and I don't even know that putting the shades on them, if they've done that already, has an effect, because this was just the other day I drove through there, and you could even see the lights two blocks away, and as far as four blocks away over to Benton Street, you could still see these lights. They're so bright, and it seems very excessive, and I just was, especially since it's so close to the residential area, and I just wondered about the staff response on the lights besides having the shading on them. Is there anything we can, anything more we can do about it for these neighbors? Because it is very bright, excessively bright. Sorry, Tracy.
We got the complaint, we went out there and looked at it. We did require them to put shades on their lighting. They meet our standards as they are now, so we can't by code require them to go any dimmer. Then there'd be a safety concern along their back, that back alleyway and sidewalk at night, so they're code compliant now.
So, I wonder if it's possible to simply contact the new owners of the new building, point out the difficulty that's being created for the people who live right behind their building, and invite them to alter their lighting and perhaps build a taller fence voluntarily, because it seems to me very clear that the people who live back there are being adversely affected and it should not have happened, but I understand they're code compliant. But they could voluntarily do some things if they were nudged.
Yeah, we could talk to them, and we can ask. We can't require, but we can ask.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Any further discussion about the consent calendar and items in it? I think I'll say one thing for the benefit of the public. We usually discuss these kinds of things during our work session, which occurs right before in the formal meeting, but we ran out of time and were not able to discuss work session, questions about work session, questions about items on the formal meeting agenda, so this is the only moment that we could do this. All right, so we have a motion before us, no further discussion. Roll call, please.
Cole.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Salee.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Throgmorton.
Yes. Could I have a motion to accept correspondence for item 6H, please?
Both.
Second.
Moved by Salee, seconded by Cole. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, I guess I did not say that the first motion passed unanimously, seven to zero. Item nine, community comment. This is a moment when anybody can speak to us about any topic that is not on the formal meeting agenda, but is something that's on your mind and you'd like to bring to our attention. So, when you step up, would you please come up, sign your name, state your name for us, and then take not more than three or four minutes to state what's on your mind. That was a fake. Good evening, Ed.
Hi, I'm Ed Flaherty. I would like to endorse what John Christiansen said on behalf of Veterans for Peace, the International Day of Peace, and Climate Action. You know, with a lot of media coverage of the oil fires in Saudi Arabia, which has gotten much more attention than five years of tens of thousands of people dying in Yemen, but this has to do with peace. We all want peace, but peace will not fall down from the sky like manna. We have to work for it. Right now, we definitely do not need a war with anybody. We definitely do not need a war with Iran, and the commander in chief does not have authority to wage war in Iran if he wanted to. Hopefully, he doesn't want to, but I would urge people to make the connection between what was said at the beginning of the First Gulf War in 1990, 91, no blood for oil. That rings true right now, and with our climate in crisis, we know that we cannot afford to spend $740 billion a year on the military while we spend maybe $6 million on the National Ocean and Atmospheric Administration and that kind of thing. So, that's not actionable by the city council, but it is actionable by each of us as individuals. Hope to see you all on Friday afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Anyone else? Good evening, Becky.
Hi, I already signed up on the list over here. I'm Becky Ross, and I am, do I need to say my address?
No.
No. I'm also a member of 100 Grannies, so hopefully, we'll see some of our grannies on TV this week. I would like to recommend that the city look at tying electrification to TIF funding and rezoning requests. I've read that electrification can supercharge the energy transition, which could help us get to the goals you've set for your Climate Action Adaptation Plan. The energy transition is underway all over the world. It is taking different shapes and may progress from different starting points depending on the area, but it's clear we've now reached a stage where globally, we're all engaged in a shared challenge. The electricity sector in particular has decreased the average generation cost of solar PV by over 70% since 2010. In the first three weeks of April 2019, Mid-American Energy Wind Farms generated the amount of energy it takes to power more than 117,000 homes for a year. In some regions, it is already cheaper to generate a kilowatt hour with renewable energy than it is with fossil fuels. Natural gas emits unregulated amounts of methane, and methane has 10 times the global warming potential as CO2. Therefore, by creating an incentive to build all electric buildings, we are facilitating future conversion to energy produced entirely from renewable sources. This plan would support Mayor Throgmorton's statement that the city should seek a quantified plan for emissions reductions, and I would like to commend the city council for your efforts to reduce Iowa City's carbon footprint. Thank you.
Thank you, Becky. Anyone else? Hi, Mike.
Good evening, council. My name's Mike Carberry, resident of Iowa City in Johnson County. I'd like to commend city council for its recent climate crisis resolution. I know, I just love living in Iowa City, where you can have folks from junior high that are the climate strikers asking you to do that, as well as the Hundred Grannies. that are the climate strikers, asking you to do that, as well as the 100 grannies. Now, I'm somewhere in the middle, but since I just had my 40th high school reunion, I'm probably closer to the grannies than I am to the climate strikers, so I was told there would be no math, but you can figure it out. Okay? So I've worked professionally on climate solutions for almost 20 years. And we're asking you, I'm asking you, and the grannies and everybody else, to continue to be bold, be leaders on climate change solutions. Do not let Fairfield, do not let Dubuque, Des Moines, or even Berkeley, California, get out in front of us. You have the support of this community to be bold on climate change. Some of the things that we can do, we all know, and just in your resolution, we were talking about quit burning fossil fuels, and we need to start to stop doing that by 2030 or 2050, depends on how you shape that. But our buildings, and I think Becky was talking about that, we need an electrification. We need to stop burning natural gas, and for many, many reasons. And we can produce all of electricity with renewable sources. So that's something that you could provide incentives for people, for electrification, for that transition. I know I bought my house from a gentleman that worked for Mid-American Energy, and everything in my house that can be natural gas is natural gas. So I have to make that transition, and other people are going to have to do that, too. So on our new buildings, the City of Berkeley just passed a resolution, or it wasn't a resolution, it was a mandate, that new buildings, especially commercial buildings, could not use natural gas. They have to be electric, and we need to be that kind of bold. Transportation. We need to make this city the most walkable, bikeable, and bussable city in Iowa, and we're working on that. You have a bus thing out right now, where you're asking people what they want to do, but the answer is to get more people on the bus is free buses. Work with the cities. The cities and the universities need to work together to figure that out. How can the buses be free so more people take them? We need extended routes. We need extended days of service. We need to, we need passenger rail. We've worked on this. As a county supervisor, I worked every year on those issues with the county and I, with the city, excuse me, and I encourage you to continue to do so. We need more renewable energy in the city, on city buildings. We need solar on every building that the city owns or operates, and especially on new ones, but we can retrofit the existing ones. And then we need to help the citizens of this community to transition to solar as well. And of course, we're going to have to work with Mid-American Energy on these things. We also need an electric vehicle economy here. We had an EV show at the farmer's market this weekend, and there was so much, so many cars there, and so much enthusiasm for electric vehicles. Well, we need more infrastructure, and I know the Mid-American is talking about putting more EV stations, charging stations, along Interstate 80. Well, we need, the city, the counties, and the other communities in this county, in this area, need to work with Mid-American and the other utilities to get as much EV infrastructure as we can. And of course, I already mentioned, working with the other communities. Iowa City can't do this alone. You have the support of the citizens, but I know I attended meetings about every two months where every community in this county sat down and worked together, and that also includes the University of Iowa, and the Iowa City Community School District, and the other school districts in the area. We all need to work together on this, because this is a collective problem. It's going to, it already affects all of us. It's an existential threat. We all know that. We hear every presidential candidate that trapes through calling climate change an existential threat. I had to look up what existential meant, and I said, oh my God, we're doomed. But we're not doomed. We have the answers. We know what to do. We just need to be bold enough to take action. So thank you very much for what you've done. Continue to work as hard as you can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Brianna Wills, 70 Hickory Place. I'm the Executive Director of Old Brick here in Iowa City, and I'm here to share a little good news with you tonight. I'd first like to take this opportunity to thank City Council for being part of our amazing renovation here at Old Brick, just down the street from you guys. We worked with Jeff here for the city to donate the, some of the historic Ped Moll bricks to our project that we just completed. We just completed a addition, a 2,000-square-foot addition patio extension to our historic building, which is really amazing. It's really, the great thing about the project is when we finished it on budget and on time in just three weeks, it looks like the 2,000-square-foot addition has always belonged on our 156-year-old building, which is really amazing when you can add such a big project, and it looks like it's always belonged on the building. And the great thing about Old Brick is it serves more than 15,000 people every year that come through our community center, and serves really, you know, a large portion of our, of people, you know, in Iowa City and the surrounding communities. So it's a really well-used building, and serves a lot of, we have 16 nonprofits that have offices within Old Brick, so it really serves our community really well. So we just want to thank the City Council, and you guys did some cost-sharing with this, the city and the county, and we were able to do some really environmentally forward projects with that, some wastewater management with that project. So the Board of Directors at Old Brick really are trying to show that historic buildings can be forerunner, can show that historic buildings can be at the forefront of showing that they can be environmental stewards, and that a lot of times historic buildings are grandfathered out of, of a lot of standards, and they can say, oh, we don't have to do that because we're grandfathered out. And we really want to show that we can be, we can be really forward and show that environmental standards are really important, and that's really what we showed in this project. So anyway, I just want to take this opportunity to share some good news, and that it's a really amazing project, and we hope you come visit us and see that it's really going to add a lot to our downtown district, and we hope you come to share.
Thanks, Brianna. It really is great to see that addition being made. Anyone else? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Andrew McCubbin. All right. So I'm going to be discussing a little bit about, I want to clarify some things, on the Dodge Street and Governor overlays. So I want to first point out some inconsistencies in the report on this project during the work session earlier this evening. The vast majority of Dodge Street residents were not notified if you were present at the meeting. It was indicated that property owners of the Dodge Street and Governor Streets were those that were notified, not specifically the residents. The public meeting was scheduled less than two weeks before being held, and also was conducted during a break when many students were not on campus, and would not have been able to attend. The street is mostly entirely rental and multifamily housing, a large portion of that likely students. They should have been notified. And then also, what about residents on adjacent streets that would be impacted by loss of parking on Dodge and Governor? Are the streets and parking users not directly adjacent to, but just as, excuse me, just as affected by the proposed changes? It's important to keep in mind, when looking at correspondence from these, from those advocating for the bike lanes on these two blocks, that none of it comes from people who were present at the meeting. Those actually in attendance at the meeting left with an understanding. I was one of them, that parking would be kept, and that at least part of the project was settled as such. To be frank, one of the attendees who was self-professed against vehicles entirely, excuse me, even spoke up at the end of the meeting, acknowledging that he had been wrong about the need for the 80 or so spots affected. I'm an avid cyclist. I support bikeability, but I also don't support that at the expense of poor design decisions for all stakeholders affected. The city has a focus on climate safety impacts on city decisions. It seems like there's little that the city's doing to mitigate emissions with, by addressing low-hanging fruit. So what is the climate safety impact of cars circling and looking for parking? Or sitting idling behind delivery trucks and stop buses? Many of these people will not give up their cars overnight, and in many cases, don't have the luxury of giving them up. As an aside, I want to point out that I didn't, I was aware of this at the meeting, so I wanted to bring it to your attention now. It wasn't until after the meeting that I was, realized that a city employee was present as a resident. Came to my attention that the Transit Director and former Transportation Planner was present at the meeting. I want to note that she was the most outspoken about keeping South Governor two-way, and was advocating for the removal of parking on Dodge Street and South Governor, if that meant getting bike lanes. I would like to think that this wouldn't be an issue with city staff, just want to ensure that the council is aware of this, potential conflict of interest in these design decisions, and making sure that people that do have a conflict of interest on city staff as residents aren't making design decisions that only benefit themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Anyone else? Good evening.
David Dixon. Seems like every time I come to Iowa City, I come to a City Council meeting.
I noticed that.
Not sure if that's a good thing or a bad thing. I want to kind of add on to a little bit what Andrew said in regard to traffic engineering decisions with regard to Dodge and Governor Street. I watched the work session online. I heard a number of things being discussed by council members and by transportation planners, none of which are engineer, who are engineers licensed to conduct those decision-making processes. At least, unless you guys are using fictitious names up here or something. Assuming those are your legal names, none of you show up in the PE registrations for the state of Iowa. So my concern, when I hear some of these discussions, is that city engineers are not being allowed to make determinations as to what's safe and what's appropriate on city streets. The, you know, everybody can say they want a bike lane, everybody can say they want two-way traffic or one-way traffic, they want it to be buffered, they want it to be a superhighway, whatever it is. Those are all decisions for engineers to be making. You can relay objectives, you can't tell them how to design the road features. Yes, I know sometimes they sound like simple pavement markings, but those are traffic control devices. They are regulated. To get at some of what the problem is here, in my mind, beyond that, is the fact that there seems to be this, this notion that renters are somehow less than full and equal citizens in Iowa City. I've heard numerous references to, you know, the idea that, well, renters are only going to be here for a few years at a time. That may be true for some of them. I'm pretty sure you've got a few renters on Dodge Street that have been there for a decade or two decades. There's enough rental units there, I'd almost guarantee it. You've also got a rental code that allows for one more resident per dwelling unit than parking space required by the landlord. You have people, you know, two-bedroom apartment with two parking spaces that has three people in it legally by city code. What are the odds that in a two-bedroom apartment, only two out of three students on average have a car? What's the likelihood in a one-bedroom or studio apartment that a married couple has a single car in those circumstances? You have a need for parking, your engineer realized that. He made a statement at the meeting, discussing that with residents, that the parking was necessary and would be kept. That's an engineering decision to mark that parking. I hope you don't take the engineering job, whether it's to eliminate parking or not, I personally don't have a dog in the fight. That's an engineer's decision whether that parking is the most appropriate marking for that pavement, not anyone else. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Anyone else? All right. All right, I'm not seeing anyone else, so we'll move on to item 10, Planning and Zoning Matters. Item 10A, rezoning south of Scott Boulevard and north of Tamarack Trail. This is an ordinance conditionally rezoning approximately 36.81 acres of land, located south of Scott, south of Scott Boulevard and north of Tamarack Trail, from interim development single-family residential, IDRS, to low-density single-family residential, RS5. Could I have a motion to pass and adopt, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Memes, seconded by Thomas. Discussion. I want to give people in the audience an opportunity to speak about this that they would like, so is there anyone in the audience who would like to address this particular topic about Tamarack Trail and so on? Good evening.
Good evening.
Please state your name, write it down, too, please.
Okay. I'll write it first.
Okay.
This is my first City Hall, City Council meeting, 210.
Oh, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Michelle Edwards, and I live on Hickory Trail, and I'm part of the group that's pretty upset about the housing development and what it will do to our neighborhood. And it's really apropos to a lot of the other discussions that were preceding this one, in terms of play, climate change, and all those things. Because we have a neighborhood that's quiet and has green space and a park for kids to play, and it is now being threatened because of a development that will add, on our street alone, by conservative estimates, 571 trips on that street, which will change the neighborhood completely. What I'd like to say is, I have a hard time understanding why you would be for that. Like, we go to cities and we visit neighborhoods, and like generally, we go to neighborhoods like the one we live in, and like, we want to walk there. It's like a treasure. And I can't understand why we would want to change that. We have so much encroachment on green spaces in Iowa City. We've lost, in the little loop that I used to walk, the four-mile loop, three farms. Why would we want to put 15 houses there? Couldn't we stop a moment and think, I'm not saying let's not develop this, but I'm saying let's think about that. Let's think about what that field would be, and what it would be like to add fewer homes, and integrate that with the neighborhood, and really have a little jewel in Iowa City that's quiet and green. We're close to Hickory Hill Park. Often, people extend their trip from Hickory Hill Park up and down our street. People come from ACT and walk around. I invite people I know from all over the city to come to our little pocket park, because it's so sweet and quiet, and there isn't much traffic. And I really beg you to reconsider, to take some time and think about what this development is. We have development all over Iowa City. It's changing it. We've been told in our neighborhood, we should accept that we now live in a city, and we should have a city street. And I'm saying to you, why? Why should the city traffic and everything be invited in? Why don't we preserve something that's beautiful? Thank you.
Pardon me, could you say your name again?
My name is Michelle Edwards.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Good to see you again. It's been kind of a long road for us. We've been from neighborhood meetings, through Planning and Zoning Commission, through council meetings, and here we are at adoption time.
Pardon me, I know, we know who you are, but would you please say your name, please?
I just put that down there, didn't I? And I didn't tell you. I'm Scott Rudy at Tamarack Trail.
Thank you, Scott.
Sorry. So we just, we think that we can still come with a good outcome. We really believe we can do it. Michelle made just a great statement. I just want to echo that, of course. But throughout this walk, we've been sometimes ridiculed, sometimes ignored. We make another attempt tonight to get some kind of accommodation, and only, only you can cause that to happen. Now, we've said that RS5, and that's a low-density zoning measure, we're fine with that. As Michelle said, what we're looking for is just a little bit of room to try and make it a little more pleasant. It's changing the makeup of our neighborhood, no doubt about it. So we seek your aid in easing the traffic, preserving safety and peace, ensuring effective drainage management, harmonizing new with old, not after the fact, because I saw a couple of things. of things tonight that you've tried to get at after the fact, and that's very hard. If we can do this ahead of time, if we can get ahead of it and come together as a community to put this plan together, it could be awesome. Seventy-five neighbors, as you know, petitioned you to ask for your help. Many of them are here today. While we've been sometimes viewed as an annoyance, an impediment to growing the tax base, the fact is, our approach is for the good of the city and a stronger, more attractive tax base, we believe. When no flexibility was shown by city, developer, zoning commission, then and only then did we come and protest the rezoning ordinance, just to say, can we make this wait? Can we just wait and make a better plan? Obstacles were placed in our way, rules applied, interpreted uniquely. We're discouraged, but we keep coming back in hopes you'll help us out. Members of the city council have asked the developer and city staff to work with us. However, no compromises have been gained. John Thomas suggested in a council meeting or two that an additional calming circle be added. I believe that's been ignored. The comprehensive plan was cited to us by the council, so we looked at it in greater depth. While it is outdated and needs revision, we also saw its intent of 1999. And that intent clearly sought out green space, harmony with the current development, a plan that accounted for the wetlands and sensitive areas specifically. The topography was cited as hilly and erodible. Since that time, there's been no reduction in the need to protect green spaces that I'm aware of. It's topical, and I couldn't have had a better lead-in tonight with the climate action piece. It's real. Before we approve this plat, the citizens of Bluffwood ask once more for your help. Please delay the plat approval, not the zoning, the plat approval at this time, and ask the city staff to find areas of agreement with us. We are flexible, we are reasonable, and we will do what's best for the city and our neighborhoods. We believe that, we know we can do that. As a matter of fact, Terry will come up here in a couple minutes and show you a couple of options, things we've been thinking about. He's been working hard. We're trying to do our best. We really are. I just thought I'd ask, I know you don't know probably if you've, how many people are here, but would people who are in on this particular initiative please stand? And maybe if you're standing already, raise your hand, just so you know we're here and really appreciate that. And appreciate your consideration tonight. Thank you.
Who's next? Good evening, Terry.
I'm John Cardo.
Sorry, John, my bad. Excuse me.
Well, hello again. I thought I would tell you a little bit about myself because, so you'll know where I'm coming I know I don't know all of you at all by any shot, but let me say a few words first. I'm a retired engineer. I was employed in industry and as a university professor at Washington University in St. Louis for over 50 years. I'm also a contributor to ASTM, which is a world standards organization. This is one volume of 80 that covers just about everything from baseballs to you name it. They have a standard for measurement or development of a particular product, and it's one that I've contributed to over the years. Now, as a result of my experience, I've been analyzing complicated engineering problems for a long time, and they've taught me a couple of things. Real data is usually more useful than any estimation technique. That's one thing. Secondly, algorithms are only as good as the inputs to the algorithms are. And with respect to the traffic estimation that's been done on this development, I really have to question those numbers. I'm not sure how Mr. Rawson made his estimates, but clearly they did not include real data on the intersection between First Avenue and Hickory Trail. So I'd like to ask the council to have such a study done. I think it's important, and therefore to postpone the plat consideration. Now, if the study shows that a lower number of exits and entrances are made than was used in Mr. Rawson's estimate, that's possible that the number calculated for the new development would be less than the 500 and therefore require only one exit. And by the way, only one exit was shown in the first letter that we got from the city with a plat on it. I guess it was a preliminary plot, perhaps, I'm not sure, but there's no, there's only one exit on it. So obviously, the developer and owner were thinking, we only need one exit. Now, I guess that's the question. So what I'm asking for is a new study, traffic study done on that intersection. Doesn't take much time. So we find out what's really going in and out of this new development. Thanks for your attention.
Thank you, John. Anyone else? I'll get it right this time. Good evening, Terry.
Yeah, it's Terry this time. Terry Protexter, 1007 Tamarack Trail. And let me get, don't mind. Okay, not the right one. Yes, it's out here. Jeff and I had it up a second. I'm sorry. Okay. Let's try this one. Nope, that's not me. Let's try this one. Thank you. Okay. It does, and then we had the full screen here. There we go. All right. Good evening. Let me start this over a little bit. As you know, and it's been commented before by the other gentleman, the last time we went to council meeting, the first one, you kindly suggested to the city staff and the developer and owners to work with us and have some discussions. Well, we did that prior to the second council meeting, a week or so ago, and it wasn't exactly what I would call, in my business terms, a productive meeting or even a receptive meeting that we attended. And I think you've heard that comment the other, last week. So we, on our own, continue to look to find other traffic calming solutions other than putting trees in the right-of-way, which was proposed earlier by the city. We found other calming, traffic calming options utilized by other U.S. cities, not just a study, if you will, both by the U.S. Department of Agriculture, excuse me, Department of Transportation and the Institute for Transportation Engineers. So I'm using a lot of people's other data, not Terry's opinions. What we came up with, or in my research, basically, there are several other options. One I'll mention tonight that you've seen before in some of the correspondence I've had with U.S. city council staff was emergency vehicle only enclosure, and I'll show you that. But I even spoke with some folks over at the fire department, and they enlightened me on a couple of points about it. So I won't spend a lot of time on that first one. There's also a choker option, and I'll show you that in a second, and the chicane option, which is an interesting word, but I'll show you what that means. Median barriers, that's pretty obvious, so I'm not going to spend time referencing that one. Just want to show you a visual, looking up our street toward the new development with the trees and the, if you will, the end of the development with the, what I call turnaround circle, not really a cul-de-sac, per se. This was the option we were looking at for quite a while. It, if you look at that post in the middle, basically, it's a flexible post that fire and emergency vehicles could just move right over the top of. It's a flexible thing. We found out, when I talked with the fire marshal, he suggested, well, Terry, that could be an option, but, he said, what happens in the wintertime if the snowplows build up snow or ice on that little piece of pavement between the two, between the two yellow signs there? And, well, point well taken, that could be an option or a problem. So let me move on to, and this came out of the, obviously, the engineer's, transportation engineer's professional website. It's called a choker. Basically, if you look at the picture on the right, basically, what it does is it chokes the street down to barely one lane, which would help reduce, would help slow the traffic down. And I'm not suggesting this be done in the new development. I'm suggesting we consider this both for Hickory Trail and Tamarack, because we, you, and this is not for me, it's from sources of information at the city, we can't propose something after the development's done or after the plat's approved. So we have to do this in concert together, and that's what the gentleman prior to me was suggesting. Let's wait a couple of weeks so we can get in front of your staff to say, what about this option? What about this option? To me, that's an acceptable option to try and reduce the traffic. I'm surprised other folks haven't brought this to your attention, considering the time we've spent in front of this PNZ and the council here. Chicane, depending how you pronounce it, that's another option, which really creates a zigzag effect. If you look at the left-hand side, you can see the red pieces there, knocks it down to about one lane, still allows for fire safety to get through, still allows for snowplows to get through, et cetera. Why not look at that option? The right-hand option is really more the median option, kind of, that really doesn't slow it down because it's too wide a street, in this picture at least. So we're saying, why not talk to us a little bit more? We shouldn't be the ones having to come up with calming solutions other than trees. So we're, again, repeating our thought here, but we'd ask the city council, instruct the staff to slow down the plat approval for two weeks. We're not asking for months, so we don't want to impede on the development, developers' fall construction activity, but give two weeks for us to sit down, and if you would direct the city staff to work with our neighborhood concern group to find a logical and appropriate solution for us to increase, or excuse me, for deal with increased traffic, we would appreciate it. And to borrow from some folks earlier, let's come together and truly work and play as a community in the future here. And that's what I have to say. I really hope you take us seriously. We've spent a lot of time and tried to get people's attention, and I'm not sure that we have been able, been successful at that. Thank you.
Terry, I'd like to ask you one quick question. It has to do with a couple of the options you just, a couple of options you just presented. Are you suggesting these as ways of reducing the traffic volume or reducing traffic speeds?
Reducing traffic speed. We went around, honestly, to all 120 houses this weekend, asking people if they could. They had a time to show up tonight, and that's why you see a few more people here tonight. And everyone that was home that understood what was going on, many of them have small children, and they said, we support this, Terry. You know, we've got kids that are riding their bikes over to Regina down the street to, well, the more older children, going to City High, et cetera. And they're concerned about the number of cars coming through the neighborhood. So I think it may not reduce the cars, and as John said, we're not sure the data is accurate because it's not based on data, it's based on algorithms. We're just saying, let's slow this traffic down so that we don't have issues for our children in the neighborhood.
Okay. Got it. Thank you. Anyone else? Good evening, Brandon.
Good evening, Brandon Ross. I'm wondering if, considering that a lot of people in this city are concerned that we are building past our atmospheric capabilities, that the traffic itself, that the number of cars per unit is probably well over what the average should be in accordance with global standards right now, scientists who are talking about lowering the carbon imprint. Given that, I wonder, and I ask the council after I'm done, to possibly comment on what's public transportation, what transportation is there to come to this area so that it can reduce traffic? Also, many people are not driving as much, and of course, they shouldn't be. I'm in a household of three adults, only one car, which is not used that often, and, you know, I'm past the age of 20, and I still walk and bike everywhere. I see Mayor Throgmorden, he's even past the age of 30, and I see him on his bike. And, you know, I'm thinking that we are building, I do see him on his bike, some people are laughing back here, but they think that he can't do it, but this guy moves. This mayor covers a lot of ground on two wheels. And I think that, Mayor, you might be the senior member, I don't want to, I don't want to bring speculation of this council, and you are on the bicycle. So are there amenities for bicycles to be used instead of cars? Always we get into a wrangle about engineering, road engineering, engineering roads, engineering parking, engineering, you know, but really, you know, if Greta Thunberg were here, some of you might have heard of this Scandinavian youngster who has pointed out that we cannot keep building this way, and that I would like to put all of these very nice neighborhood people's minds to rest if, in fact, we didn't need the cars very much at all. So are there other options other than chicanery and traffic engineering that we can engage in for this project to make it a model for not only Iowa City but for other communities? Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Bruce Miller. I live at 908 Bluffwood Drive.
Good evening.
And I have a nine-year-old daughter, and from my house to the local park, she's going to have to cross Hickory Trail. And if that increased volume as well as increased speed is not dealt with, she's going to be in a very unsafe situation. And there's not a really good place to even cross. There's not even a four-way intersection with stop signs. There is no stoppage from our place to the park. And so I'm really concerned about her safety, and I hope you guys look at, you know, how we can control the volume as well as the speed to make things safer. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Hi, Sarah.
Hi. Sarah Barron, Johnson County Affordable Housing Coalition. I am interested to learn about the different strategies being proposed for this neighborhood that includes some kinds, that kind of keep some folks out of the neighborhood or reduce the traffic in certain ways. And I just simply want to say, if you find that some of these strategies are needed for the safety of children or for reducing traffic on streets, that you make it an equity priority, that these same safety functions be extended to streets throughout Iowa City that have children playing on them and other things, that it's great that these neighbors are here advocating for their neighborhood. You know, that's wonderful. And also, there are many other people who are not represented here tonight who need similar safety and traffic consideration given to their neighborhoods. similar safety and traffic consideration given to their neighborhoods. And because you are talking about public investment, I want to make sure that if you're investing in one neighborhood in this way, that you're prepared to do that for neighborhoods throughout Iowa City, regardless of the assessed value of the homes that are located there. Thanks.
Thank you, Sarah. Anyone else? Hi there.
Hi, I'm Nick Bowman. This is also my first time here.
Hold on, could you please write your name down? You got it. Good deal.
I live on Hickory Trail, which is kind of the main street that's going through there. So, I don't know nearly as much as my neighbors, who have put way, way more thought and time and effort into this, you know, and so I'm sure I concur with many of the things they've said. I guess I want to broach an issue that just hasn't been brought up to my knowledge, that's of concern to me. So, in the last month or two, we had several animals in our neighborhood who were found dead and eaten, and so someone contacted Department of Natural Resources to look into what this was, and they decided that this was likely the act of coyotes. And one of these is a deer, too. We're not just talking about little animals, I mean, we're talking about really serious stuff. And so, if you think about sort of where our neighborhood is situated, we've got Hickory Hill Park on the west side, we've got, you know, basically, to the south, we have additional housing, to the north, and a little bit to the east is wilderness, including, you know, this area that's going to be developed. And actually, if you go just a hair east of our neighborhood, then you have farmland. So, I am no coyote expert. I did a little bit of reading. They apparently run 40 miles an hour. They're kind of scary creatures. So, I think about, we have a lot of dogs. My partner and I have two of our own dogs, you know, that sometimes, you know, and now we're scared to leave them out at night. I mean, in the neighborhood we have already, so what happens if we've got, you know, so if you think about where they live, they probably don't live in the farmland, they don't live in the neighborhood, they don't live in the park, they probably live in the wilderness, that part of which is going to be torn up and replaced with houses. So, basically, I, to myself, like, if something happened to, whether it's, you know, our dogs or our, we just had a neighbor move across the street from us with a two-year-old child, which not only thinking about traffic, but thinking about wildlife, I couldn't look myself in the mirror if I didn't come here today and let you all know about this, and let you know what a major concern this was, you know, in terms of jumping into something right away. And so, I think it's really important to consider, you know, as you make your decisions, and thinking about how quickly to move forward, and things of that sort, because I don't, you know, I couldn't tell you whether coyotes live here, but if they live somewhere, it's going to be in the wilderness nearby, you know, if they're attacking animals in our neighborhood. And just the idea of seeing, you know, someone in our neighborhood get hurt, you know, now that's in your control. Who knows what would happen with this? But you have the authority, you know, to think about, you know, what's best for the safety of everyone in our community. Thank you.
Great. Good evening, again.
Hi. Christy Teal. This is not my first rodeo, but this is, it's a pleasure to speak here again tonight, and I appreciate the opportunity as one of the taxpaying citizens of Iowa City to come here and discuss my concerns with the development of the property north of us. I am the neighbor with the two-year-old. You can probably hear her crying out in the hallway right now. I try to keep her in here, but she can be a bit disruptive, and just as this development, we feel, is being very disruptive to the way of life that many of these residents have enjoyed for 20, 30 years, and the reason that we moved into this neighborhood, as my next-door neighbor, Michelle, much more eloquently than I ever could articulate the vibrancy and the feel of this neighborhood. We don't have to be like every other neighborhood, and I understand, Councilwoman Mims, that there isn't sufficient developable land in Iowa City, as you mentioned in the first council meeting, but do we need to develop more land? How many houses are currently on the market? Is there a demand for large houses? Is there a demand for houses that are really close together? Or can we create something that is continuous and congruent with the neighborhood that we have now? So, we're not against the rezoning, but we would respectfully ask that the plat decision not be made tonight. I felt a bit like the wool was pulled over my eyes through this process. I'm a scientist by training, and there are very clear steps and methods for doing an experiment. You have a hypothesis, you test it, you analyze the data, you come to a conclusion, and then you perform the next experiment based on the results from the previous conclusion. I felt that putting together the rezoning and the plating together was kind of like putting the cart before the horse. Shouldn't we make one decision before we make the second? Councilwoman Thomas brought up additional concerns with traffic calming for the new neighborhood, and that we were told that it's too late. But isn't it your choice to decide if it's too late? So, I ask that you please do not accept the plat tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Christy. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone else. We have a motion on the floor. I'm going to turn to our council members now, and we will discuss whether, what we want to do with the motion to pass and adopt. So, who wants to go first?
I want to go first.
Okay.
I really guess, you know, by looking at the area here, and looking at all those people coming here, if you could remind me, there is 120 houses, right, and 75 people signed for the petition. Unfortunately, this area is only, not only is it 75, 120 people, there is large area that being owned by only two people. That's why you couldn't make the 20% of the protest. And, I don't know, but the people who are here are really concerned, have a concern. I know that, I'm not against the develop, just to make sure, I like it, there is no problem, I know that you are not against it, too. But, I'm really concerned about the neighborhood concern. And yes, those people still coming here, even though like two of them, we already failed and, like, passing this for two, it's failed twice, but it's still, the people try, working hard to come up with ideas, just try to make us hear. 75 people pushing the council to hear them. And this is 75 out, if I said out of 120, or out of 122 people on this area, this is really, you know, more than half. But, the way that the code work is not the way that I describe it right now, unfortunately. But, I think we really have to listen to those concern. I really propose that we postpone this for now, and make sure that staff and the resident and developer come together and find a solution. I really encourage the council to listen to those 75 people, who've been over 30 or 20 years resident of the area, and they are concerned, they're still trying hard to come up with ideas, and to present it. Come here with a child who crying, and, you know, by this time, almost supposed to be in bed. Yes, we have to think about all this. And I understand that the developer is complying with the code and everything, but as I said before, the code is not everything. We have to look to the heart of the code. And I really encourage you to listen to those resident. Thank you.
I'd just like to make sure all of us council members know that we, what we're dealing with right now is the proposed rezoning.
Yes.
If we pass, if we approve the rezoning, we will turn to the preliminary plat, which is what most of the comments were about. So, right now, we're focusing on the proposed rezoning.
I understand. But, it's coming together, and they propose both of them.
I'm going to continue to support the rezoning. I think tonight, I don't know that people have directly said it, but certainly neighbors last time said they did not oppose the rezoning. It's the other kinds of issues that are related to that. And so, I do not disagree, but what there are serious concerns and issues that are very justified in terms of your worries about traffic, both volume and speed, that need to be addressed. At this moment, since we're talking just about rezoning, as you have said in the past, or at least some of you from the neighborhood have said, you do not oppose the rezoning of this. I think it fits with the comprehensive plan. I think it's an area that makes sense for us to rezone, and so I'm, without delaying this anymore, I'm going to support the rezoning.
I think for the benefit of the residents here, again, I think the mayor talked about it. Right now, we're just voting on rezoning, and then in a little bit, we'll start talking about the plat and sensitive areas. So, I'm going to support the rezoning. I think many of you have, and I so appreciate all of you coming out. I'm going to save some more comments for later. Thank you.
I just want to insert my comments here, because I think my concerns, which have been expressed at the first two meetings, which have to do with the traffic impacts of this project, are addressed as a condition on the rezoning. So, while I, too, support the rezoning in concept, staff themselves acknowledged in the process of the rezoning that there were traffic concerns raised by the proposed development, which were to be mitigated by one of the conditions having to do with the traffic circles. And so, I want to say, I think, you know, in terms of some of the concepts that were presented tonight, the traffic circles, in my view, with, you know, compared to the chicanes and the chokers and some of the others that you raised, it's my observation that the traffic circle would be by far the most effective way of slowing traffic through that extension. It would also be the most attractive way of addressing it. In fact, I think it would give a distinguishing character to the development. So, in my view, it's something that's of value to the development, to have the traffic circles as part of the project. My concern was that the standard by which the circles were incorporated into the plan, which was based on intersection distance, block lengths, rather, the block length minimum and maximums for new development are, I believe, 300-foot minimums, 600-foot maximums, and what I saw in the proposed rezoning was a distance exceeding 600 feet, it was roughly 800 feet. So, it's, in my view, it's a relatively minor change, but I think it's a significant one in that these dimensions do matter. There are reasons why with traffic calming devices and with block lengths, there are dimensions of minimums and maximums, and that it's, there are impacts when you exceed them. So, it was for that reason that I felt that, you know, I could not support the project because one of the conditions, namely the one related to the traffic circles, was not quite in conformance with the standards by which the circles were proposed. It seemed to me a relatively minor change. I know it's late in the process, but nevertheless, as has been noted at the previous readings, it's much easier to do something in the, before it's built than once it's constructed. So, it seemed to me, while it seems minor, something that did address the issues of traffic as it pertained to this rezoning. The issues on Hickory Trail, I think, are a completely separate issue. I hear your concerns with that in a way, it's sort of, it's related to the project, but separate from what we're discussing tonight. But, you know, I do feel, with respect to this project, it would be enhanced as a development, and I think it would also work better for the residents to have the, that minor change that I've been suggesting, just simply adding a fourth circle to the project.
Eleanor? Oh, are you down?
Yeah, I was going to ask Eleanor if I could. So, in terms of this question of traffic calming in relation to the rezoning and the preliminary plat, at what stage do we have the opportunity to weigh in? Is that an appropriate topic for the rezoning, insofar as it's reflected in density? Or if there's some sense of intervention, can we also address that at the level of the preliminary plat?
I think, as we discussed earlier, which is why I was cautioning you about closing the public hearing, if you wanted different conditions for the traffic calming, that that was the point at which to do it. And so, at this point, the developer is asking for the lowest-density zoning that the city offers, and has agreed to conditions that the majority of the city council has agreed to. I think your discretion now, given that, on the rezoning is very limited. The plat is typically not where your discretion lies. It's more our subdivision codes complied with, and it's my understanding that they are.
I would just, I would add another point to, I guess where I don't quite align with you, John, is a lot of the concerns that I'm hearing from people sitting out here is not about the traffic volume or speed within the new development, which is what that extra traffic circle would address. There is already a traffic circle at the end of Tamarack, which will, at that point, will slow traffic down from the new development as it goes into the existing Tamarack. What I'm hearing, and maybe I'm wrong, is the concern about that additional traffic and the speed of the path, and the speed of that traffic within the existing development. There is nothing that this developer can do, in my estimation, or that their plat can do, to address that. That is what the city needs to address with that neighborhood through traffic calming measures that are outside of the scope of this rezoning or this plat, because those traffic circles are in the new development. They're not on the existing Tamarack or on Hickory Trail. I definitely believe we are going to need to work with you in that neighborhood for additional traffic calming measures as we go forward. And a comment was made about having actual data, not using estimates, and that is what a lot of our traffic calming measures do, is doing actual measurements, and based on those actual measurements, and the interest of the neighbors in that neighborhood, of, you know, certain percentage saying, "Yes, we want traffic calming," of, you know, looking at what would work best. And I would totally supportive of our working with you as we go forward.
To that point, I guess that was, I guess, one of my points, is that in the future, there would be nothing preventing future calming efforts on the part of future councils in the existing neighborhood, assuming the other criteria are met, or not.
Of course.
Yeah, okay. So, that's important to clarify.
There's a petition for traffic calming already, as I understand it.
Yeah, and so I think that's where I'm coming from. I am hearing that there's no opposition as such to the development itself. And, you know, as many of you know, I shared some of your frustrations. The development process is incredibly frustrating. I know I've been at that podium myself before I was on council, and in a couple of months, I'm going to be off council, so I'll be in your shoes as well. It's incredibly frustrating for residents in terms of when is the appropriate time to intervene and get that intervention. And that is something I think that we could do a much better job of, and I think we have made some improvements on. But I think to the concerns relating to traffic, there are going to be tools moving forward into the future that can be utilized. In terms of density, you know, my original preference was to actually have greater density. We, I think we at some point need to make some changes in our, in our single-family to allow different housing types, but those don't exist at this particular time. So, it does comply with our existing comprehensive plan, and I am going to support it as far as that goes. I think to the extent that there are future issues related to traffic calming, those measures are going to be available moving forward. So, I am going to continue to support this project.
I guess I'm a little sidetracked by this process, because I was under the, I understood about the conditions before closing the public hearing. But my assumption was, when we got to the plat and sensitive areas, we would be able to address some of the concerns of the traffic at that point. Now I'm understanding that is not the case.
I think that's been pretty clear the whole time, that that's what the concern was about closing the public hearing before you changed those conditions.
Right. And I guess I understood, like, the conditions, but I didn't realize that we could not discuss, like, traffic calming things and make those kind of requirements from the plat and the sensitive areas, because we don't, we don't know what all that is right now. I mean, for the most part, the plat and the sensitive areas, we may have comment on that, we won't be able to change any of that, is that what you're stating? Like, we have to either accept it as it is, or we need to make conditions right then. right then.
Are you talking about within the development, within the new development, as opposed to outside the new development?
So, I think that was the misconception on my part, is because the traffic calming items from, that we're discussing right now, is outside of the development. So, when we get to the plat and the sensitive areas, that's about the development.
Right.
And it's not about, you know, the traffic calming of the, of the existing neighborhood now.
Correct.
So, that's where I kind of got sidetracked, because I didn't realize that the existing could not be a part of our next discussion, to make conditions on the streets.
You can, you can impose conditions on outside this development. Or you can impose, or do your own traffic calming outside this development anytime you want to. You don't, and it won't, it's not a part of this proceeding. It's a, it's a traffic calming program that the city has that, that can be pursued by the neighborhood. And there's a process, et cetera, to put traffic calming on the other streets outside what, where this new street is going to be.
Yeah.
The only thing the plat involves is the
I was trying to point out.
The new street.
Okay.
Jeff, did you want to add something, Jeff, on this?
If it would be helpful for the council and probably for the benefit of a lot of the residents in the, in the room, we could have Kent come up and describe this traffic calming process. It's been initiated by the neighborhood, but not all the neighbors may understand how that works. And that does apply to the existing roadways of Tamarack and Hickory Trail. Would it be worth five minutes to go through that process and explain how that works?
I think it'd be helpful.
Can I?
We'll come to whatever your point is, Maz, after Kent talks about this.
Good evening. Kent Ralston, transportation planner. So, yeah, so, separate from the proceedings tonight, the Hickory Trail neighborhood, the broader Hickory Trail neighborhood, has already filed a petition with our office for the city's traffic calming program. So, again, regardless of what occurs tonight with either the rezoning or the plat, our staff, let's just assume it doesn't happen. Nothing happens with the development. We will move forward regardless with the existing neighborhood to address the speeding issues, or the perceived speeding issues at this point. So, what we do, the petition we have now is signed by 50% of the affected properties, which are those that have property actually abutting Hickory Trail, not the side streets, but Hickory Trail itself. We already have that, and that's in our office. And we'll work through that, again, regardless. From that point, the next step is that we'll actually collect the data, real data with actual devices. We'll collect the data to get travel speeds as well as volumes. And if the travel speeds are five, the 85th percentile speed is over 5 mile per hour over the posted speed, which is 25. So, if 85th percentile speeds are 30 mile per hour or higher, and it sounds like they probably are from, from neighborhood comments, then they qualify for the program outright. From then, we have a neighborhood meeting, and everybody of those affected properties are invited. The side streets would not typically be invited because they're not the ones that are actually being affected by the speed on Hickory Trail. They may be, in fact, those that are speeding. From there, we decide, we, sorry, but it's true. We, we try to ascertain what traffic calming devices could help and what the neighborhood, and we do that through talking to police and fire, engineering, public works, transportation planning. And then, we bring back a host of options for the neighborhood, and we try to find consensus. If it's speed humps, if it's chokers, chicanes, traffic circles, whatever it might be, then there's an actual neighborhood survey. So, all those residents that abut Hickory Trail would get a survey. If 60% of those residents vote in favor, then we bring it back to the council for your consideration.
A follow-up question. So, let's assume that we approve the rezoning. I'm not sure, I don't know if that's going to happen, but let's assume we do. The preliminary plat gets approved, and then the final plat gets approved. The development begins. There's a new road constructed. New neighbors live in that neighborhood. They could also apply, could they not, for traffic calming measures?
Correct. The, the new neighborhood could, and the old neighbor could, the old neighborhood, once the new neighborhood is, is established, if that's what happens, can even reapply. We typically ask that it's a year or two, just because of staff time. But there's no hard and fast rule. So, even if they, for whatever reason, choose not to move forward now, the existing neighborhood, or they don't qualify, they can reapply with us through a petition. We would require another petition, but they can repetition a year later. At some point, after we've got four or five, and none of them would qualify, you know, we might ask that they not do that. But yes, they can always reapply through a petition.
Kent, Kent, one, one question I have with that.
Hold on, John. Maz was asked, wanting to ask a question. So, are you going to just follow up with Kent, full stop, or what?
No.
You can go, John.
Okay. So, you mentioned, we, we have the petition. We see that there's a concern on the part of the residents about traffic. And then, as you noted, there is, there are these standards or thresholds that have to be met in order for that traffic calming to then proceed
Correct.
As a, as a process.
Correct.
What if they don't meet our standards, which, as you said, are 30, 85th percentile speeds over 30 miles per hour?
Correct.
What if they don't meet that? Can council lift that requirement?
It's the city council's policy, correct?
Yeah. Through, through your budget process, you could design a project outside of, outside of the program. But the program's our way of treating these neighborhoods equitably, so that every neighborhood goes through the same standards, and so that the neighbors have a voice. And we've set that target at 60%. But if, if they didn't hit the speed target, or if they didn't get 60%, approval within the neighborhood themselves, and the council still felt compelled, you could come in and direct staff to design traffic engineering there, and we, we could do that.
Okay. So, I think that, I hope the community, the residents, understand that we, council does have the authority, if it should not meet the standards, to, to lift the standards and allow the traffic calming to proceed.
I would also add that there's very few streets that we've looked at where there's been neighborhood concern that don't meet the standards.
Which would be fine.
Because that would be the rationale for them applying.
We don't need to lift them, but I just wanted to make sure we had that option.
Yeah.
Okay. Maz?
I just want to ask, right now, the resident come up with some solution or, like, ideas that they think will be good for them. And can they just move with you, like, separately? Now, I just understand that, yeah, they, they can come later, or they can start now of proposing whatever they want right now for the, the area that they live at, not that new development. Is that okay, if you can just take whatever they propose and help them out to
Correct.
Try and see which one is really going to work out?
Yeah. So, what we're actually, yeah, no, that's 100% accurate. So, from this point forward, we'll start working with the neighborhood regardless, again, of what happens tonight with the rezoning or the preliminary plat. The only thing we're waiting on is our actual data collection, just because we don't, we have more needs than we do time right now to collect the data. But I would anticipate that we collect the data in the next four weeks. And then, after that, we would meet with the neighborhood, assuming they qualify, and start the process.
I just want to hear from the resident. Do you think this is a good idea now? You can just, like?
Council talk.
Because, can I ask or not?
All right.
You know, I guess, if, if someone can come and say, is that something really going to satisfy you?
Well, let me go back to politicians, they trust but verify. So far, we've tried to verify some things, and then the goalposts get moved. Because we had understood, coming into this meeting, that the two, even though the new subdivision plat and our existing subdivision, if we wanted to do some traffic calming methodology and work with the city on that, can't do it later. You got to do it right now, or get it stopped for two weeks so that we can meet with city staff. I think that was, Eleanor, you that suggested that they're two tied together. So, I could be a wrong interpretation, what you said.
For the street that is the new street, not the existing streets?
Well, that's not what we've been told. So, I stand corrected.
The applications only deal with the new street. There's no approvals that the council is giving to anything outside the new street.
Okay. Then, to your question, I guess, we would just like to sit with the two or three options we've suggested. Or maybe Mr. Austin has other ideas. We don't want any trees, because we know that that study isn't valid, the tree ID option. We, if we could sit back down with them as soon as possible and give some feedback from the greater membership of our network, our neighborhood, then we want to explore those. I'm not one to be saying, this is the best one or not the best one. I'm just one, one or two of us that have proposed some of these ideas. We want the rest of our neighbors to have some feedback as well. But we didn't feel that we had another voice passed tonight. That was our feeling all along. We thought, well, it's kind of like, go away after the plat's approved. We don't want to talk to you about calming. Now, do we have to come back? You were talking about Hickory Trail. Do we have to come back as Tamarack residents, in the way I'm reading, listening here? Do we have to come back as Tamarack residents and get a petition signed by, well, we can get a petition signed by every Tamarack neighbor, that say, we want a traffic calming study as well as the Hickory Trail?
No.
Or can you blend the two together?
We'll blend the two together.
Okay.
Okay. I guess that's, if you, if you feel this is a good solution, because, go ahead.
That's my, no, go ahead. Thank you.
So, I'm a, I'm a walker all over town. And I notice the speed now, because it's become an issue on our street. I have a question for you. How effective are these calming methods? Because where I, where I am, I see little, you know, light signs up, 25 miles an hour. Looks to me like a lot of these things don't work. They're like, kind of, like meditation. You have to practice. You have to do it all the time. You have to keep reminding people. So, I'm wondering, you know, we're talking about doing a study on Hickory Trail. Is that going to, is that going to really do something? And then, we're going to get this other thing, and then, we're going to have to wait a year for that to, like, you know, you know, I don't know, cause enough problems that we'll have to get another petition? And, you know, I don't know about you, but I've got a career. I can't spend my life, you know, doing traffic control. So, I'm wondering, how effective are these calming studies that you've done? And how effective are those, those things that you put in place?
Good question. We've applied to traffic calming measures all over the city, and they tend to work pretty well. So, I, we can't continue to be engaging in a lot of back and forth and interaction. That will, is not a good way for us to proceed.
But in this case, because now we have, if I understood that the resident will be satisfying on, like, just dealing with, with, you know, the staff on, like, finding traffic calming measurement, you know, in Hickory Trail, or, you know, like, not outside the new development, which is that the concern, I can just vote, because I'm not against the developer, you know, development for this area. I'm just, I want those people to be satisfied that they will work with the staff to do something to satisfy them and address their concern. When I ask them, I will understand that they are satisfied, so I can vote for the developer. You know, that's why I have to, I guess, there's, nothing will prevent me from making sure those people, you know, are satisfied, so I can also vote for this, since this is not going to affect my vote, it's not going to affect, you know, I don't want to feel like I'm the bad guy, because I'm not. I'm not against the developer at all. But I want to make sure this is, these people are satisfied.
Okay.
That's why I've been asking them.
Okay. Did you want to say something?
I was just going to say that, over my years on the council, I'm impressed with this group of residents. We've seen a number of people that come to talk about potential developments in the area. But your vigor and enthusiasm and coming together, because obviously, the phrase "stronger together" holds very true, and particularly in this instance. But I think, you know, we're kind of going round and round here, and again, moving away from the decision we're actually supposed to be making as far as the rezoning, which, as I said before, and you again said, we heard from the majority of you that you're not totally against the rezoning. Development is good, and hopefully, it'll be a nice development there. But you're concerned about some of the other things. And I was concerned, I think John and I talked a while back about the estimated numbers of traffic. And what we really would have liked to have seen was what the speed is on those streets, Tamarack Trail and Hickory Trail. So, I was happy to see, hear from Kent that, that that is going to be done. I wasn't sure on the timeframe on that. I don't know if I can ask him that, what kind of a timeframe. Hopefully, it would be urgently.
He said up to four weeks.
Okay. That, that'd be good. I must have missed that, because that would be good. And hopefully, that, that would help you folks as far as the study, and then actually getting it done, if it's decided on the speed humps, or whatever it might be, because I've seen that work. I live very close to Teg Drive, which many years ago, there was concerns about the speeds on that, because it's right along the park, and it's kind of a north-south freeway for folks. And they applied several, more humps, not bumps. And, and that's been very successful. You don't see people exceeding even 25 miles per hour on that street. So, I think that is one option that, that could be a very good. And going back to the original decision, I mean, we've just been told all along that it complies with the comp plan, and that's supposed to be what we sort of base our decision on. So, I think we have to keep that in mind.
Okay. I'm the only person who hasn't spoken about this. I have voted for the rezoning in the two previous meetings. I've not seen any compelling reason to change my mind about that. So, I intend to vote for the rezoning. I think you've been very clear about your concerns about traffic speed and any implications that might have for safety of anybody, especially kids, in the neighborhood. So, I think it is important for our city staff to work with you later on about traffic calming. But I, with regard to speeds on Tamarack, after it is, after it is built, that's when you'll really have an opportunity to converse with them about traffic calming measures on Tamarack. Right now, what Kirk is, or Kent is referred to is a traffic calming study for Hickory Trail. Okay. Well, that's underway, and we'll get results about that, and we'll all learn from that. And I'll bet something will be done in response to that. But when, we won't do traffic calming for Tamarack until we get some data about how much traffic is out there, how fast it's going, whether residents along Tamarack, the whole stretch of it, want to see traffic calming measures adopted. And if they do, we'll engage in that process, working with you to, to adopt relevant and useful traffic calming measures.
So, Mayor, I'm a little confused, because there was a question that was just asked for clarification about if Hickory and Tamarack will be done together, you know, in this traffic calming. And so, I know the residents are here, and I, and maybe you're, as I am right now, a little confused. So, Jeff, you just mentioned Tamarack and Hickory.
We are, we are going to, it has already been initiated. The neighbors have already initiated a traffic calming request through Kent Ralston's office. That is underway. We are scheduling the, the data collection portion, which is really step two, right? The resident's petition, step one. Step two is the city collects data. Step three is the neighborhood meeting. And then, we go, and we go from there. And if we get approval from the neighborhood, if we can get consensus and approval, it'll come back to council. That happens immediately. Regardless of how you vote tonight, Kent and his team are going to collect the data within four weeks is our target. And shortly thereafter, after they have a chance to analyze it and prepare some options, they're going to, they're going to call a neighborhood meeting and have a meeting to discuss those options. From there, it's consensus building within the neighborhood before it comes back to you for approval.
So, let me ask a follow-up question to make sure I did not misstate myself. If I did, I'll backtrack a little bit. So, the traffic calming measure that's currently underway, that Kent has been referring to, and you just described, will be for Hickory Trail subdivision and Tamarack from, from the, from the roundabout at the top of Tamarack, all the way down to Hickory Trail?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, good. So, I misstated myself on that.
Yeah.
What, what I meant to be referring to is traffic, the traffic that will be generated by the new development and what that implies for traffic volumes and traffic speeds on the whole stretch of Tamarack. That's what I was referring to.
So, in, in five years, if this new subdivision's completely built out and the conditions change, we can come back and look at it again. You know, five years, I just, I just threw out. But when conditions change, we can revisit any traffic calming improvements that we may have made, you know, a few years earlier.
So, Bruce, I hope that helps clarify and, by correcting what I said.
Yes. And I wanted to make sure that the residents got clarification on that piece.
And it will come to us after that, right?
The council votes to approve the traffic calming project, yes. You typically see speed bumps. So, if you're, if you're used to seeing, I don't know, we do a handful of these a year, and you'll see them on your council agenda. We just did Willow Street approval, maybe last meeting or two meetings ago. You typically see speed humps, but those aren't the only options that we'll present. We've tried chicanes before. Those weren't necessarily well-received when we tried them. But we, we're willing to try the other options that have been suggested.
And just to clarify, those options don't have to wait for our budgeting process? They could be
No, we have an, we have an annual budget line for traffic calming, so that we can be responsive throughout the year, and we don't have to wait for the budget cycle.
Then, I guess, you, this means that's going to come to us again. And we will make, I will will make sure you guys are satisfied. And I don't wanna say "we," I will make sure you are satisfied. But then, I guess, that's a good deal.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor.
Can I just note that item 14 on your agenda tonight is the Willow Street Traffic Calming Project. So you're voting on one tonight.
Good deal. Thank you. Okay, without objection, I'm gonna ask Eleanor to call a vote on this, so roll call, please.
Cole?
Yes.
Ms.?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
No.
Throckmorton?
Yes, motion carries six to one. That is, it's passed and adopted, six to one. Item 10B, Tamarack Ridge Preliminary Platte and Sensitive Areas Development Plan. This is a resolution approving the Preliminary Platte and Sensitive Areas Development Plan of Tamarack Ridge Subdivision, Iowa City, Iowa. Could I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Thank you.
Moved by Ms., seconded by Teague. Good evening, Danielle.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Danielle Sitzman, NDS. Let me just reinstated here. So this is the Preliminary Platte and Sensitive Areas Development Plan for Tamarack Ridge Subdivision. This is the rezoning that you just approved, this is the land area, in the dashed area that was just rezoned, and this is the preliminary platte to establish the subdivision of land and the layout of lots and roadways within it. This is the preliminary platte itself, it's oriented with north towards the left-hand side, so the street's actually running north-south. It is a 60-lot subdivision, single-family lots oriented along the connection of Tamarack Trail from the existing Stub Street, all the way up to the north to Scott Boulevard, with a cul-de-sac off of that buckle-down. There are, designed into this 26-foot wide street width, and several traffic circles. This one is the existing one on the north end of Tamarack Trail, then there are two more along Tamarack Trail, and, like I said, a cul-de-sac there. There are no east-west connections available because of the topography of this particular site. There were two conditions just placed at rezoning, that, one of which had to be upheld at, through the plating process, and those are those traffic calming measures, like I just mentioned, with the street width and the incorporation of the traffic circles into the final design. There is another step after this in the plating process, this is just the preliminary platte, so we will continue to monitor the design of the subdivision through that next application, when the Public Works and Engineering staff actually review final construction drawings for those streets. In addition, there's another condition on the planting of streets in trees in the street right of way. So when staff reviews our preliminary platte, we go through a series of steps of reviewing components of the platte, and that includes compliance with the comprehensive plan. In this case, similar to the rezoning, we find that the comprehensive plan intent has been upheld through the design of the subdivision. You'll see both the citywide comprehensive plan and the district plan referenced here. They are a little bit older, and this particular design is a bit of an adaptation of those two plans, but overall, the extension of single-family housing in this area complies with the comprehensive plan. We also do review streets and circulation, and as mentioned earlier tonight, we did look at traffic generation, and the assignment of those volumes of traffic, and where they would be accessing the surrounding street network. Based on those estimates, excuse me, we actually find that the amount of traffic at some of the intersections will be decreased, because there'll be additional ways for traffic to access the surrounding network, other than the sole access point to First Avenue that currently exists. The network beyond this neighborhood does have capacity to accommodate that additional traffic generated by 60 single-family lots. In addition, we've been talking about the traffic calming program, which is for existing public streets, and there's also, in addition to that, above and beyond that, CIP projects envisioned for the surrounding street network. We do evaluate pedestrian connections and the layout of blocks and lots. In this case, sidewalks are required and will be built on both sides of all streets. There is not a traditional street network, grid network, in this neighborhood, but we have tried to emulate that through the location of those traffic circles, and about the design requirements for the block lengths. So as Councilmember Thomas alluded to earlier, anywhere from 300 to 600-foot block length is what's encouraged in our subdivision design. There are some exceptions that are allowed to that for specific topographical constraints, and we have evaluated that with this platte, and feel that what's been designed is appropriate. There are additional environmental-sensitive areas included in this area. This is not, was not an OPD or Planned Development Overlay rezoning, because the applicant has actually complied with our ordinances requiring protection of those types of environments. Those include critical and protected slopes, of which they are not disturbing more than the allowed area. Also, protection of woodlands, which they are satisfying, and they have investigated the potential for archaeological resources, and that has been addressed satisfactorily. There will also be a requirement for neighborhood open space, due to the proximity of the neighborhood park in this area. Staff feels that that can be satisfied by a payment of fee-in lieu to the equivalent amount of land that would need to be dedicated in the future. That will be evaluated, sorry, let me go back to stuff, that will be evaluated at the time of final platte. We also evaluated, at this stage, the stormwater calculations, and the proposed way to contain or manage the stormwater, as well as provision of public utilities. Detailed construction drawings for the proposed stormwater facilities will be evaluated with the final platte as well. So talking about the steps in the development, highlighted in blue is the step that we're at now. This land has been previously annexed and rezoned to an interim district, it was just rezoned tonight to that single-family zoning district. Like I said, this is the Preliminary Platte and Sensitive Areas Development Plan. Following this, there will be a separate application for the final platte, that will come back to you, and then staff would review the final Sensitive Areas Development Plan. So based on our staff's review of compliance with the previous conditions placed at rezoning, the comprehensive plan, and the applicable subdivision standards, staff did recommend approval of the proposed platte. At their August 15th meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted six to zero to recommend approval of this to you tonight, with no additional conditions. And that concludes staff report.
Any questions for Danielle? I don't hear any. Thank you, Danielle. Would anybody like to address this topic, maybe adding to things you've said, because, you know, we've already heard the earlier comments about traffic calming and so on? Good evening.
My name is Michael Welch, I'm with Acxiom Consultants, representing the developer on this project. I haven't spoken to you through the rezoning process at all, but would like to talk to you a little bit about the preliminary platte and the process. I guess I'd like to start a little bit about myself, since it seems like through this process, there's been questions about who's preparing stuff and how that works. So I am a professional engineer, I'm practicing for 17 years, and I'm licensed in four states, including Iowa. Through this process, and our process at Acxiom, and my personal process as a professional, I really look to work with our client, the developer, and bring projects forward that meet the code, and meet staff concerns, and address neighborhood concerns, and we were aware at the start of this project, there would be concerns from the neighbors. So with that, I kinda wanna talk through that timeline a little bit, and how we got to where we are tonight, and through this process that we've been through. So we started with the developer in April, looking at this property, and kinda working with them on concepts, and evaluating the sensitive areas that we knew existed on-site, and how that process would work, and what was available to develop, and what made sense. In the middle of May, we brought a concept to staff, to Ann and Danielle, and sat down and talked through, here's what we're proposing. It was similar to what we had, what we see tonight. We had 61 lots, instead of the 60, we had wider streets, we didn't have any of the traffic calming, and it was otherwise fairly similar. Danielle and Ann took that to staff the following day, at their weekly staff meeting, and during that, we got some feedback from staff, and that included that they had concerns about the traffic and the speeds that would exist coming down Tamarack Trail into Hickory Trail. So they requested that we go to the code minimum of 26-foot wide streets, they requested that we add a traffic calming circle, and they included the street tree requirements. Originally, we had a stormwater basin in the southeast corner, well, that's actually the lowest point of the site. Staff asked that we see about moving that to preserve the trees that were there, and that preserve more of that wooded area, and see if we could relocate it. So as a result of that meeting, and that feedback, we came back with a concept early in June, that has what you see today. So we still have 61 lots, we had three stormwater basins on the west side of Tamarack, we preserved more of the woodland on the east side, and we incorporated the traffic circles that you see now, with the addition at buckle-down circle, that intersection, and then the one to the north, to kinda simulate those blocks that we've talked about. After that, on June 10th, we had a public meeting. Per the city's recommendation and procedure for the Good Neighbor Meeting, it's requested that you notify neighbors within 300 feet of the development. We looked at that, for this particular development, that would have been 10 houses in the Tamarack and Hickory Trail neighborhood, that would have needed notification. We saw that, thought that doesn't make any sense, could've kinda anticipated how this was gonna go with rezoning and people's concerns. So we sent that notification out to 140 properties, which is all the houses on Tamarack Trail, all the houses on Hickory Trail, and the cul-de-sacs. So I think it's really important for you as council to know that, and for the neighborhood to know that, that we were interested in their feedback, knew that this would be an important change to their neighborhood for them, and so kinda proactively wanted to include them to get their feedback. On June 10th, we had the Good Neighbor Meeting. Unfortunately, I forgot to get a sign-up sheet out, but it was probably one of the best-attended Good Neighbor Meetings that I've been involved in, and I'd say, maybe three times as many people that are here tonight were at that meeting for that hour and a half that we had it. The developers were there, myself, and Ray from City Staff was there. We had a good, I think we had a good dialogue over that hour, hour and a half. A lot of questions came in, including, you know, what was the zoning gonna be, would there be multifamily, what was the density gonna be, what was the lot size gonna be, and how did that compare to what they currently had, and would it affect their house values if they chose to sell? A lot of comments around the side yard setbacks, we went with the city's code minimum of five feet, and that's what the development has and is proposing. There was concerns, obviously, about the traffic on Hickory Trail and Tamarack, there was concerns about the loss of wooded areas, there was concerns about stormwater erosion. A lot of the neighbors were under the impression that this property was part of the conservation of preservation farms, it would never be developed, and some of them, unfortunately, had been told by their realtors or by people in the neighborhood that this couldn't be developed. So there was a lot of, kind of, I think, an education, unfortunately, for the neighbors at that meeting, that that wasn't the case. And I think that's a hard message to hear, if that's what you've been thinking, and that's where you've had your home for 10, 15, 20 years. So as a result of that meeting, or after that meeting, we met down as a design team and a development team, and looked at the platte, and looked at what we could do, and the decision was made to lose one lot. And in doing so, we went from a minimum lot size of 65 feet wide, to our minimum now is 70 feet, with many of the lots wider than 70 feet in that buildable area. For comparison, the existing Tamarack and Hickory Trail, I think it averages around 84 feet wide, but I think it's important to note that that was developed 10-plus years ago, and economics and lot sizes and that has come to play, and so those narrower lots are kinda what's currently affordable, and fits within the economics of development. So after that meeting, I was actually contacted individually by one of the neighbors, who wasn't able to make the Good Neighbor Meeting, and so I met with him personally, and just went through the process and heard his concerns, and most of them were similar to his neighbors. And then on June 27th is when we submitted our rezoning application, and that preliminary platte application. And we went through the process with the city, which includes, you know, the rezoning meeting with planning and zoning, preliminary platte with planning and zoning, and then through staff, comments on preliminary platte. So I guess all that to say is that I understand for the neighbors, where change in your neighborhood is kind of a big deal for you, and it's important to have your feedback, but I also think, as a development team, that we were very sensitive to those concerns, and worked closely with staff to address those concerns ahead of getting, ahead of that preliminary platte submittal, and rezoning submittal, and we incorporated those features that you see today, have been in there from the beginning. And that wasn't an accident, that isn't because we had to, that's because we saw them as valuable and beneficial, and understood those concerns and wanted to incorporate those. So when we got to this point, we could say in good faith that we worked with the neighbors, we listened to their concerns, we did what we could within our development, in the area that we have control over, to make those changes and incorporate those features. So I guess a couple other things, you know, I think has kinda been flushed out now, but again, I wanna reiterate, as a developer and as a designer, we can only take care of the stuff within our property. We can't affect what the traffic is doing, or what the city does with traffic outside of the development. If through that process, if the neighborhood feels they need additional assistance outside the city, I would be happy to work with them to do that, if that's what they felt, or I would recommend that they work with someone if they feel that they're not getting what they want from the city in that process. A couple other things to point out, I think, in our development, with regard to the sensitive areas, we are retaining over 50% of the woodlands that are there, we worked very hard with the developer and the current landowner to come up with a boundary that let us do that, and minimize the critical slopes we're impacting. There's protected slopes, which by code, we are not impacting, and do have a buffer around. Check my notes here. And I think, I mean, I think that really gets to the heart of this, is that we feel we are bringing a product forward that council can approve, the neighborhood can feel good, that at the end of the day, it'll be a neighborhood that's compatible with their existing neighborhood, and welcome any questions if council has them.
Any questions for Michael? Thanks.
Thank you.
Sure.
Would you like me to sign anything?
Huh?
Do I need to sign?
Just, I think, restate your name would be sufficient. John Cardo, right?
John Cardo, yeah. I have a question. I don't know, I don't believe that we received the first Good Neighbor Letter, but that's water under the bridge. The letter that we did get was on July 31st, from Ann Russett, and she says that the preliminary platte for Tamarack Ridge is a one outlet subdivision. Now, my question is, when did this change, and for what reason? In other words, this one outlet means Scott Avenue only, with the base closed off, I presume?
No, I think that can't be right. Danielle, can you possibly address this?
Got the letter right here.
So the word is "outlot," which is one word, meaning that it's not a lot for development, but has lots in it that are outlots for not development, so the stormwater basin or something like that. So unfortunately, it's, yeah, one outlot.
Oh, I read it as "outlot."
A little bit of planning jargon, unfortunately.
Okay.
I'm embarrassed about how many times I make that kind of mistake, John, so it happens.
Newt Carter from Tamarack Trail. I had a few comments that I wanted to make. I think that development should ultimately go ahead in some form. I agree with Councilor Thomas, I think there should be one additional traffic calming measure in the actual development, sort of got disconnected in the previous discussion with the, whether we're doing the rezoning or the development, but I think an additional calming measure in there would be good, as it is. With regard to the presentation that just took place, I think it's completely disingenuous to claim that there'll be a decrease, or no increase, or that there'll be a decrease in traffic exiting Hickory Trail. I don't believe that any of the current residents of the existing development would probably use the northern Tamarack route to get out onto Scott Boulevard, almost under no circumstances. I myself wouldn't, it's probably further for even the northernmost section of Tamarack Trail to exit in that direction. So everyone else will almost always exit on Hickory Trail onto First Avenue. And then the new residents, it will be quicker and closer to come through the existing neighborhoods, so I don't know how they came up with that, but that's where those assumptions come in. There's also a claim that Scott Boulevard and First can handle the additional traffic. The other day, I was at 5:17 PM, I was stopped at the fire station, just off of Dodge, for traffic backed up to get onto First Avenue. I know that there's works in plan for 2020, and I hope that they solve that problem promptly as well. I hope that they solve that problem promptly as well. Pavement sidewalks are great. I don't know what the conditions are on the developers to complete those. We still have one sidewalk in our existing neighborhood that's not being completed on an undeveloped lot of land. So there's like a discontinuous piece of sidewalk in our own neighborhood at the moment. Regarding to the issues of stormwater, storm, probably should send a different message for this. There's already a severe erosion of the stormwater outlet at the bottom of Tamarack Trail. So if someone wants to come take a look, that'd be great. And finally, I just wanted to address the construction traffic, and if there's any conditions on the mechanisms for construction traffic for the development, and whether they'll be restricted, at least for the good part of the first part of the build-out of the development, if not for the entire development, to only access off of Scott Boulevard potentially, rather than using the existing neighborhood as the main thoroughfare for construction traffic. And that may, and if the council would also consider potentially not even opening the throughway of Tamarack Trail, which I'd be a beneficiary of ultimately, to some point in the development that had been built out sufficiently just to forcibly prevent the construction traffic traipsing through the existing neighborhood when they could be coming in off of Scott Boulevard, where there aren't any residents currently at least. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, Brianna.
Brianna Wills. I just want to second what he just said, actually, about the traffic, the construction traffic. We were told that there would be a way that we would encourage the construction traffic to use the new entrance. But I think there are ways that we can do more than encourage it. In fact, I would say that what makes sense to me is to not actually open the Tamarack Trail road all the way through until there's residents actually living on the other side of the road. If you build, you know, the Tamarack Trail, if you don't actually open the road all the way through until, or if you open it and then close it somehow, and then you would force the construction traffic to use the new entrance. Because I think if you have all of the construction traffic to build 16 new homes using Hickory Trail, you are going to rip up that road. And, you know, when you add a whole bunch of little kids and construction traffic, you know, I think that just exacerbates the idea of all these little kids on that road. So I think, you know, we can more than just encourage them not to use that road. You know, if there's a way to just close Hickory, excuse me, Tamarack, by either not having it as a full pass-through road yet, or having it as a full pass-through, and then just physically closing it until, you know, there are truly residents living, you know, the houses are completed, or some version or some percentage of them are completed, and then opening it or something. But having a physical barrier so that there really isn't a physical pass-through, so that the construction traffic truly does have to use the new road, you know, makes sense to me. So just wanted to...
Okay, thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Anat Levtov. I'm also one of the residents on Hickory Trail. And I have not been to as many of these meetings as my colleagues have. I'm very interested in a procedural question, I guess, at this point, which is, I'm hearing from several of the council members, as well as from the city attorney, that there isn't any responsibility for the developer to be doing anything, with the exception of where the area that they are building. So this new area that doesn't currently exist, but is obviously connected to our road and Tamarack. And so I guess what I'm wondering from you is, is there really any point of us being here and voicing our concerns if there's really nothing the developer is responsible for in any way in the area that already exists and has already built and been there for many years? So sure, you know, the city will consider our application for the current traffic problems, not considering all those extra cars and traffic. But why have we all been spending our time if there's really, you know, the developer can't do anything, but the city is only voting on what the developer is doing, what they're allowed to do, and that's what the codes are all about, then, you know, I understand that there are lots of rules and procedures and ways that things function, but it sort of seems like this is a pointless discussion. If we can't control anything, if we have no responsibility to ask the developer to do anything within our existing road, then what's the purpose? You know, it's going to be rezoned, there's going to be stuff rebuilt, and we're just going to have to work with the traffic calming later. So, you know, if the consideration is not to change your vote in any way, then what is the purpose of having this conversation based on things that you cannot change, or you can't, and I understand you can't tell the developer to do things that are different, but what is the city committed to doing, and what is the council committed to doing for the existing neighbors in that area? So, and I really just want to say, I appreciate the comment about the affordable housing, that this is not something that should only happen in our neighborhood because our homes are valuable in some way to someone else, and people are voting. But it should be the case that this is the consideration for every neighborhood where these kinds of issues are coming up, and that, you know, that there is that consideration for the local politics. So maybe I've completely misunderstood the conversation, but it seems like we're all sort of like, well, there's not a whole lot we can do from here on. You know, we'll have to just talk about it in a year and a half after the road is ripped up, and the coyotes have eaten our neighbor's dogs, you know. So maybe that's a very pessimistic point of view. I would say that the fact that all these neighbors are here and have been coming back all this time shows that I think they're optimistic that you'll hear, we'd like you to do something, and not just say, well, you know, can't tell the developer to change this. Well, then, okay, great. Then what is the city going to do to address the concerns that are not addressable by someone else?
Could you please restate your name? I didn't hear it.
Anat Levtov.
Levtov?
Levtov, L-E-V-T-O-V.
Thank you.
For the last time, I promise.
Please state your name again.
Scott Rudy, sorry.
Thank you.
Ms. Solly, you asked the question, are we satisfied? I don't think so. And that's unfortunate. I don't think we've seen... Mr. Thomas, you did have a good suggestion. I wish that it would be taken, because that calming, one more, would probably help. I'm not saying it's the answer, not at all, but I'm saying it would help. And we can't, you know, Ms. Levtov just said, why are we here? Yeah, we've been here many times, and we're very concerned. And we're just trying to get to an answer that can help us all. Some great, great points about the construction, some great points about ensuring that the issue is handled, is dealt with in a way where we all can walk away and say, we did a good job, all of us. Council, the developer, the people in the citizenry can walk away and say, we did a good job. We made a few changes. We did some things to make a difference. And we got something good and better. But as has been said, if we just go out of here tonight and say, okay, it passed, and it's over, and it's done, and we come back two years from now, three years from now, and say, gee, it sure didn't work out very well, why do we do that? Why shouldn't we be proactive? That's my point. That's my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Anyone else?
I'm the Public Works Director. I just wanted to make mention that I did reach out to the developer, asking about construction traffic during the construction of this project. He's made a commitment to work with his contractors to, you know, direct them not to use Tamarack and Hickory Trail. There's always going to be an errant truck, so, you know, we can't, I can't guarantee that there will be no construction traffic on the roadway, but every effort will be made to limit the traffic to Scott Boulevard during the construction. You know, once we've accepted the roadway and accepted the public improvements, then it's going to be on the city to maintain that roadway. So at that point, we will need to have it open to through traffic, both for, you know, for maintaining during winter maintenance and some of those other things. But, you know, so once we own the roadway, it's our obligation to maintain it, so we'll have to have the barriers down. But up until that point, we'd be able to limit the traffic as best as we can.
That's pretty much good news, but I need to ask a follow-up question. How long is the construction likely to take?
I would imagine this will be a one-construction-season project, so...
For the road itself?
For the development, as they do their grading and they work their way through. I have not heard that they're going to phase the project. You know, if there's going to be a phasing involved, then that may change things. But I imagine that by this time next year, we probably would be looking at an acceptance of the improvements.
Okay, that's good news. But there would be subsequent construction of houses?
Correct.
Yeah. And that's not subject to the same kind of constraints you just described, right?
That would be correct. I mean, the roadway would be open at that point. There, again, you know, we can encourage, you know, that they come in from the north, but, you know, that kind of goes beyond the purview of anything that we would have to be able to put restrictions on.
Yeah, okay.
You mean, the only thing that you can do, you encourage, but we cannot as a city just to ask them not to come in that area?
And that's what we've done. We will ask them not to come, but I don't, we don't have any, we don't have the ability to ticket them for using the roadway. So we'll work with the developer, you know. I would encourage folks to call in if they see construction traffic, you know, on the roadways. We'll have inspectors on-site during the construction of the improvements, you know. So we'll do the best that we can to limit that traffic through the neighborhood.
There is no any measure we can, like, implement or put there, so we can make sure no traffic will go through during the construction time.
If you're talking road and the grading utilities, that's what we're saying. We're going to, we're going to limit that, because the road's not built. After the road's built, we accept it. And then the houses are built, it could be five, 10 years before all the houses are built. It's not like all the houses are going to be built in one or two years. It's going to be probably a function of the market, but a subdivision like this could take, could take years, you know, a decade to fully build out. So, no, we, once we accept it, once the road's built to our standards, we would accept it, and then it's open for traffic. So if the first house is built in that first year, the residents of that house have access. And at that point, it's difficult for us to control the construction of a house, which may have multiple subcontractors coming in. So you could think of, you know, having a lot of different, you know, you've got the plumbers, electricians, framers, all those folks coming in. We're not going to be able to control that traffic. We're talking about the actual construction of the roadway, the utilities, the heavy equipment.
Yeah, I'm talking about the heavy equipment, too. You know, I guess, like, I mean, like, can we put a measure that to make sure the hobby are not going to come this way? They would come from Scott Boulevard or whatever.
Yeah, we can't do that after the road, the city accepts the road as a constructed road that meets city standards.
Even before that. I ask them before that. Can we do that?
Yes.
My question is before we accept the road as a city road.
Correct. Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, thanks, Ron.
Thank you.
It's pleasing to hear that the developer has voluntarily indicated that he would do what Ron just described. Okay, you know, I think we probably have heard enough to make a decision on this, because we're talking about the preliminary plat.
I agree.
Without objection, I'd like to hear from the council members, you know, does anybody want to say anything about whether to approve the plat or not? What are you going to do?
I think I'm going to approve the plat, but I did want to just address the request from the, some of the residents about us waiting two weeks for the plat, you know, to approve this and allow you time to speak. I think, as you all have saw, come out, the streets, the existing streets are not a part of this decision process. And so I don't think delaying this decision today, from my personal opinion, is going to, is going to affect the conversation potential that you could have about your streets. So I just at least wanted to acknowledge that. I am going to support this, and I think many of you have heard the comments, and I've talked to you personally, and I hear your safety concern about, you know, you're a part of the street as well as the new development, but I'm going to support this tonight, and also open more conversations with anyone that would like to have them outside of council.
I would agree with Bruce. I think, I hope that our discussion tonight regarding the traffic and what the rezoning and the approval of the plat does and doesn't have to do with traffic concerns in the existing neighborhood. I hope that's clearer, maybe than what it was before. And my sense is, and I know I'm committed, and I believe all the council members are committed, and I think our staff is, to making sure that we continue to work with you in as effective a way as we can to address the traffic concerns that you have, both in terms of the volume and the speed. I don't see where a delay of two weeks is going to make a difference in terms of what we can address and what we can't address at this point in the process. So I am going to go ahead and support the preliminary plat. But as Bruce said, I want you to know that we're here and willing to listen and talk to you about any other mechanisms that we can use to help.
I'll just, first, I want to thank you all for showing up for so many meetings, both, you know, with the developer, planning and zoning, and now city council. And I did want to comment on, you know, some of the things that have just been said regarding the street design, which has been, it's been the conditions on this project that have concerned me. And I want to say that, you know, I've been battling issues, struggling with issues on street design and traffic safety for close to 10 years now in Iowa City. And this project has shown some significant progress. As was noted, the street is the narrowest standard we have. The tree plantings, I know some of you may not feel it's addressing the traffic calming as well as you might think, but it does promote walkability, it promotes a whole range of other issues which will improve the neighborhood. And that's part of this project. The circles, adding those circles, as, you know, the developer noted, or the engineer with the development team noted, you know, that's not standard practice. So having those is also an advancement in terms of trying to incorporate concerns about traffic safety and calming into the development from day one. So there have been significant advances. I'm also pleased to hear that out of this conversation tonight, you know, if necessary, council can lift the requirements. I appreciate for traffic calming, and I appreciate Sarah's comments. You know, I really kind of had hoped this project would be a model for both new development and addressing the impacts of that new development on the existing streets. And I think we're pretty close to achieving that goal. So I don't think that's insignificant, and I think, you know, you should feel that your engagement on this has made a difference.
Anyone else? I see no one else. Roll call, please.
Oh, I was just going to make a quick comment, that I wasn't certain how I would vote on this, but I was encouraged by a number of the comments, and particularly Ron's talking about dealing with the construction traffic, because that was a major concern of a lot of the folks. Kent's comments about already looking at traffic calming study for Tamarack and Hickory, that's very positive. And then Michael, the engineer, who talked about that he was very sensitive to a lot of the concerns and changed some of the original plans due to some of the concerns that were expressed to them. So I think that's very positive. I see that as very positive, and think that there was progress made on the plans for this. I do stress again, though, that the First Avenue and Scott Boulevard intersections, the improvements, I hope that they can be expedited with, since this project's going. I hope it doesn't get pushed down the line in our budget process, and that they can be done as soon as possible to help alleviate some of the traffic congestion there. That's all.
Anyone else? Well, you took the words right out of my mouth, so I won't repeat them. It's well said, Pauline. Roll call, please. Roll call, please.
Ma'am?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
No.
Throg Martin?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Motion carries six to one. Plat and Sensitive Areas Development Plan. This is a resolution approving the preliminary plat and sensitive areas development plan of South Gilbert Street Commercial Development Subdivision. Could I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by ma'am, second by Teague. Discussion, hi Danielle, go ahead.
Good evening, mayor. I'll give a brief presentation on this one as well. This is, again, another preliminary plat and sensitive areas development plan. This is for property located on the south side of South Gate Avenue, bounded on the western side by South Gilbert and the Crandic Railroad on the eastern side. The applicant is requesting approval for a two-lot commercial subdivision. There is existing development occurring on a portion of the lot, and they'd like to create two lots, so they could offer the western half or western portion for development The zoning is already in place for the type of development that the applicant wishes to pursue. It's currently zoned CI-1, which is appropriate for businesses that include outdoor display and storage, repair and sales of large equipment or motor vehicles, outdoor commercial amusement, eating establishments, office uses, and retail uses. So they feel that they can work with the existing zoning. As I said, there's existing building under construction or in the works now, and it will be a two-lot subdivision. They did not pursue the good neighbor policy, as this is not a, they did not feel it was a significant change. This is the plat itself, again, oriented kind of sideways, so north is to the left. Lot one is the lot that's already under development, and lot two would be the proposed lot to the south, or on the right-hand side of the screen, are the areas of concern for sensitive areas, and also their stormwater management areas. Again, staff did review several components of the development against our standards, including the comprehensive plan. This is located in the south district, and both the future land use map of it and the south district plan identified the subject property for commercial redevelopment, both because of additional residential development to the south of this neighborhood, as well as revitalization of the Riverfront Crossings District. We did evaluate the transportation network. There are existing sidewalks. This development will provide additional sidewalks, and there is bus service currently in the vicinity. As I mentioned, there's sensitive areas, there's also flood plain. The developer plans to build outside of that flood plain by filling the site. They'll be subject to the city's flood plain management ordinance, as well as the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and Iowa DNR regulations regarding that activity. The sensitive areas on the site include wetlands, several different types of wetlands. The applicant did study those wetlands, and is proposing a buffering, averaging method to protect the wetlands. They're eligible for that buffering increase due to relatively small size of the wetlands and the benefit that the buffer averaging would actually provide by essentially providing a larger buffer than what would otherwise be required for the impact to that area. Again, this area is an area where cultural resource management study was conducted to rule out the presence of likelihood of archaeological resources, and that has been completed with no further action recommended. Outlot A on the southern side of the site is a stormwater management area. Early review of the site did note some deficiencies. Those deficiencies have been resolved to the satisfaction of the engineering division, excuse me. And additional detailed construction drawings will be reviewed again at the next step of development. Highlighted in blue is the stage that we're at this evening with the preliminary plat and sensitive areas development plan. That would be followed again by a final plat, which we come back to for approval by resolution, and would undergo further review by staff as well. And then there would be a review of the sensitive areas, final sensitive areas development plan. So based on a review of the compliance with the previous conditions, which there were none at the previous rezoning, the comprehensive plan and the applicable subdivision standards, staff did recommend approval. The planning commission did also recommend approval to tonight at their September 5th meeting. Happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Danielle. I'd like to ask you a question about flooding.
Sure.
So the site was inundated in 2008, and we have every reason to expect that more severe flooding will occur in the future, more severe than the 2008 flood. So I understand that one building's currently under construction, but my concern is that building elevating the site to just above the quote "one in a hundred-year," or the, what is it, "hundred-year flood plain" is inadequate. It won't protect new buildings from future flood damage. So I understand what the code calls for, but I don't, I don't think we're doing quite the right thing here. So I wonder what your thoughts are? I know you're not an expert on flood mitigation and all that kind of stuff, but got any thoughts?
I'm a planner by trade, so of course I dabble in everything, right? I'm an expert in nothing and know a little bit about a lot of things. You know, certainly we're sensitive to those concerns. The answers the engineers will give you are that those limits are set by studies. The studies are based on typical rainfall amounts. We know that things are changing, there's a possible, possibility that those longstanding trends are different. So we're sensitive to those concerns, and I think that's something that, while there's nothing that we can do tonight with this development that we are obviously concerned about.
Yeah, I completely understand that answer, but it reminds me of something Amory Lovins once wrote about energy futures. He basically said, I'll translate it into this situation, "It's like driving in one direction by looking in the rearview mirror. We need to be looking at what's coming, not what has been the case." Annual average precipitation has increased over the past 100 years. Peak precipitation events are worse and will get worse, so we can't count on past data. So I don't know what to do about that, but it's not a good situation.
Danielle, is that based, what they're doing is based on satisfying our current city code?
It is.
I think that's the answer right there, Jim. I mean, if that's the issue that we have and the concern as we go forward, it is a city code issue, which, that's what it is now, so I think we support the, you know, what the developer's doing. But again, I think it's a discussion that we come back to later in terms of, do we feel that we need to make changes to that city code to require them to fill it to a higher level to protect flooding in the future?
I'm just stating an eminent fact.
No, I know.
I'm not trying to criticize the developer, I'm not criticizing anybody, and I know what the code says.
Yeah.
But, any other views?
Well, there are a lot of buildings that are subject to the, isn't that...
That are already built.
That are already built.
Yeah, I'm talking about, you know, new buildings, enabling construction of new buildings.
Right.
So I'm not trying to shut down the conversation here. Does anybody want to say anything else about anything pertaining to this topic?
You'd mentioned the good neighbor. That's usually pretty much done in the rezoning process. You did mention that.
It can be done anytime if the applicant were to choose to, but as this did not include a rezoning, and it's not a large change from the existing neighborhood, they chose not to pursue it.
Okay. I guess the only comment I would make that gets into maybe a code issues, I do think some point in the future, separate topic, that we need to require good neighbor in every single project that we do, but that's not the current code at this point, so that's disappointing.
Any further discussion?
I think I would just ditto what Rodney Cole said. I'm not exactly sure what all will come in this commercial development, but I've had conversations with people that live in the south district, and although they're very happy for all the social services that are over there, they also want more than just that in their community, so. And then good neighbor conversations are always good, so.
All right, hearing no further discussion, roll call, please.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throg Martin?
No.
Cole?
Yes.
Ma'am?
Yes.
Motion carries six to one. Moving on to item 11, e-bikes and e-scooters in parks. This is an ordinance amending Title 10, entitled Public Ways and Property, Chapter 9, entitled Parks and Recreation Regulations, to provide for the operation of electric-assist bicycles, electric scooters, and electric skateboards in parks. This is second consideration, but staff has requested expedited action.
I move that the rule requiring the ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed, be suspended, that the second consideration vote be waived, and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Second.
Moved by ma'am, second by Taylor. Discussion? Hearing non, roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throg Martin?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Ma'am's?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor? Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Move final consideration?
Second.
Moved by ma'am, second by Thomas. Discussion? Hearing non, roll call, please.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throg Martin?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Ma'am's?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor? Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero, but Eleanor, you'll follow up on those points, won't you? Thank you.
And the surcharge and court costs?
Yeah.
Item 13, Kirkwood's English Language Learning Expansion. This is a resolution authorizing funding of $25,000 in fiscal year '20, and intent to budget $25,000 each year from fiscal year '21 through fiscal year '24 for Kirkwood Community College to expand English language learning capacity in the southern end of the Iowa City Cedar Rapids corridor. Could I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by ma'am, second by Cole. Discussion, hi Simon, you going to address this for us?
Absolutely. Good evening, Simon Andrew, Assistant to the City Manager. This is a project that Kirkwood Community College is pursuing that we are extremely excited about. So they provide English language learning courses for adults throughout the corridor. This is a project that would expand those services in the Iowa City area at the southern end of the corridor. Their goals are twofold, and you've heard both of these issues from the public quite a bit, that both employers are having difficulty fulfilling positions here locally, and that we have lots of residents in our community that are learning English and therefore find it harder to find a job, that they'd be more employable if, here locally, if they were, had better English language proficiency. So in order to expand these services, Kirkwood estimates that they need $150,000 a year. This is a five-year program that they're pursuing. They have decided to allocate $75,000 a year from their general fund toward that goal, and are asking communities at this other end of the corridor and employers to help foot the rest of that bill, the $75,000 a year. Council last year budgeted during our current fiscal year $25,000 for a program working with Kirkwood or others in the region for workforce development. That was one of your strategic plan goals for the city as well. So we were very excited when Kirkwood came to us with this program, because it fit the bill exactly of what we have been looking for. The Economic Development Committee reviewed this with a presentation from Kirkwood staff recently, and recommended approval three to nothing. And so staff is recommending that we approve this resolution to both expend those funds in the current fiscal year, and an intent to budget the same amount, $25,000 a year, for the next four years as well. So it would be a $125,000 commitment total over those five years.
I think really this is a very good partnership between us and Kirkwood is really useful. There is a lot of people in need of English learning. I know that they do, that they have been doing this at the learning center. It's like non-credit classes, so the people can just learn English. But my question is, is this, I don't know if you know that answer, is this open for everyone regardless if they are documented or undocumented?
That I don't know, in terms of enrollment at Kirkwood in those courses.
and what ramifications, if any, there are in terms of a cyclist's driver's license, whether that's points towards eventually revoking it or anything like that. To make sure that, I mean, running a stop sign on a bicycle is still a violation of state law in addition to the city ordinance. And as an example, you know, the penalties appear to be quite different. Maybe at the second reading, that's something you can present to council.
This is the fine the city has chosen, $15. If you disagree with that fine, you can change it.
Okay.
No, Brandon. No. You were already up here, Brandon. Well, I mean, it's not the fine. We're not paying $15. So, I mean, if we disagree upon the fine, I mean, the court fees... I went to court once, and, you know, I mean, I've only been ticketed here. But it's absurd. You're talking about, if you're going to make a fine $93 or $4, then it should be that, and that's what it should state. And then the people are aware that when they bike, you know, police are in the quotas, too.
I think we got your point. Thanks. Anyone else want to address this topic? All right, seeing no one else. Okay, I'm not hearing any discussion. Roll call, please.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Throgmorton.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Ma'ams.
Yes.
Solie.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. But Eleanor, you'll follow up on those points, won't you? Thank you.
And the surcharge in court costs.
Item 13, Kirkwood's English Language Learning Expansion. This is a resolution authorizing funding of $25,000 in fiscal year '20, and intent to budget $25,000 each year from fiscal year '21 through fiscal year '24 for Kirkwood Community College to expand English language learning capacity in the southern end of the Iowa City-Cedar Rapids corridor. Could I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by ma'am, second by Cole. Discussion? Hi, Simon, you can address this for us.
Absolutely. Good evening. Simon Andrew, Assistant to the City Manager. This is a project that Kirkwood Community College is pursuing that we are extremely excited about. So they provide English language learning courses for adults throughout the corridor. This is a project that would expand those services in the Iowa City area at the southern end of the corridor. Their goals are twofold, and you've heard both of these issues from the public quite a bit, that both employers are having difficulty filling positions here locally, and that we have lots of residents in our community that are learning English, and therefore find it harder to find a job, that they'd be more employable here locally if they had better English language proficiency. So in order to expand these services, Kirkwood estimates that they need $150,000 a year. This is a five-year program that they're pursuing. They have decided to allocate $75,000 a year from their general fund toward that goal, and are asking communities at the southern end of the corridor and employers to help foot the rest of that bill, $75,000 a year. Council last year budgeted during our current fiscal year $25,000 for a program working with Kirkwood or others in the region for workforce development. That was one of your strategic plan goals for the city as well. So we were very excited when Kirkwood came to us with this program, because it fit the bill exactly of what we have been looking for. The Economic Development Committee reviewed this with a presentation from Kirkwood staff recently, and recommended approval three to nothing. And so staff is recommending that we approve this resolution to both expend those funds in the current fiscal year and an intent to budget the same amount, $25,000 a year, for the next four years as well. So it would be a $125,000 commitment total over those five years.
I think really this is a very good partnership between us and Kirkwood. It's really useful. There is a lot of people in need of English learning. I know that they have been doing this at the learning center. It's like non-credit classes, so the people can just learn English. But my question is, is this... I don't know if you know that answer. Is this open for everyone regardless if they are documented or undocumented?
That I don't know in terms of enrollment at Kirkwood in those courses, but we can certainly find that out for you. Yeah, I don't know if they can be accepted as students.
Any other questions for Simon? Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else want to address this topic? Apparently not. Okay, so council discussion. Our Economic Development Committee discussed this, you know, I think it was a week and a half ago or something like that. And I was very impressed with what we heard. And also, I'm really impressed with the partnership that involves multiple organizations. I'm really pleased about that. And I had the opportunity to hear the fairly recently appointed president of Kirkwood, Lori Sundberg, talk about this in a meeting, at an event about a week ago. And I was impressed with her and the way she described what they're trying to do as well. And the new dean of Iowa City Campus of Kirkwood is fully on board with this project as well. So I think it's really a terrific initiative that is much needed in this area.
It does. I think, yeah, I'm sorry, Rockne. Yeah, it really does, because, you know, I guess right to register some people at the same, like, the early learning center over there at Kirkwood, and it's full, you know. There is a lot in need. And some people have to wait for next semester, because they cannot run this semester. This is really very useful partnership, and I don't think, like, there is no reason anywhere to oppose this kind of programs.
I think...
Susan, I don't know.
I was lifting barriers, so I'm really pleased that, you know, we've come to this point and can approve it.
Yeah, I'm pleased. I think, Jim, you were involved, and I know Kingsley was, and I was involved with meeting with staff from Kirkwood Community College probably a year and a half or two years ago. And, yeah, at that point, they were trying to find out ways to expand this. But at that point in time, Kirkwood was not prepared to put more money into it. So I'm really pleased to see that they've found a way to come up with some money. And obviously, they're trying to leverage that with assistance of municipalities, and so I'm more than happy to support this.
I love this project, too. You know, we always talk about the benefits of collaborating with other entities. But the opportunities to actually do that are more rare than what we would like, just for a variety of reasons. You know, Kirkwood has its own mission. We have our own mission. The University of Iowa has their mission. So when those opportunities do arise, I think, and to address a specific need, we really have to jump on that. And hopefully, this particular initiative can be a template for other initiatives. And on our strategic plan, we had talked about, you know, possibly collaborating with Kirkwood in terms of, you know, vocational education initiatives and maker spaces and those sorts of things. But we'll see, you know, what sort of opportunities come forward in the future. But in terms of English opportunity and economic opportunity that we can help fill a gap for Kirkwood, for the residents that we care about, I think that's fantastic. You know, one issue that I brought up during the meeting, which is another topic, but, you know, hopefully, some point in the future, we can also support initiatives on the part of the residents to do outreach to us to learn some of their languages, too. Because I think that's important, that they continue to preserve and share their language as well. But what's before us tonight is the English, the opportunity for that. And I'm just really excited to see this sort of strategic partnership with Kirkwood.
Well, I think for all the reasons that have been mentioned, it's just a wonderful win-win initiative for everybody.
Any further discussion? Hearing non, roll call, please.
Thomas.
Yes.
Throgmorton.
Yes.
Yes.
Ma'ams.
Yes.
Solie.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Absolutely, yes. Motion carries seven to zero.
Double yes.
Item 14, Willow Street Traffic Calming. This is a resolution authorizing the installation of speed humps on Willow Street between Brookside Drive and Muscatine Avenue. Could I have a motion to approve, please?
Some good traffic calming can.
Moved by Teague, second by ma'ams.
Sure.
Thomas.
Second by ma'ams.
It was a co-copany of seconds.
Of course. Hearing no discussion, roll call. Oh, sorry. David, did you want to talk this? Thanks. I'm glad you moved, because, you know, I needed the motion to...
The bright orange shirt doesn't quite do it, huh? So I have a couple of questions, and hopefully, maybe Ken will speak to this. Just recently, the city council adopted a new speed limit on Willow Street. There was a school zone speed limit. The traffic calming, it's not clear whether that was initiated before or after the speed limit change. It doesn't appear the speed limit change has been posted yet, at least last I knew. But, and I sound like a broken record, I know it, but that speed limit change needed an engineering study. This is traffic engineering also, and needs an engineer on the job. You're talking about changing the roadway characteristics. You're changing the roadway design. That is an engineering task. Whether speed humps are appropriate or not, I'm not speaking one way or the other. But it's clear that the city hasn't done the work necessary to make that determination. There hasn't been an engineer involved yet. It's something that I really think the city needs to figure out in a broad sense. It seems to be a systemic problem, how to address it. And then I also have a question. It seems like there were 22 surveys sent out, or mail-back cards, whatever you call them. Looks like there's 22 single-family homes, but there's also an apartment building with 64 units. The petition in the traffic calming brochure says renters may sign, and that there is to be one signature per household on the petition. And I would assume the same is true for the mail-back card. If you're on the petition, you ought to be able to vote when the cards are sent out. Where are the other 64 cards? And were they mailed out? Were they... Were any of them returned? Thank you.
Kent Ralston, Transportation Planner. I would note that while the traffic calming program is led by my office, the actual speed humps themselves will be designed by a licensed engineer and approved by the city engineer, excuse me. Like Danielle mentioned earlier, I'm a planner, I'm not an engineer, and I'm a jack-of-all-trades and master of none, I think. So as far as the question about the additional survey cards, the 64 the gentleman mentioned, I don't know how many units there are, but I'm assuming he's referencing the multifamily building on the corner of Willow and Muscatine, which has its own access onto Muscatine. We did contact the property manager and asked him his opinion of the matter, and he said he would be all for those speed humps, and mentioned that they need them in their own parking lot. So for that reason, we did not survey them. And I think, given the size of the multifamily building and the fact that they have their own access onto Muscatine Avenue, it clearly would have not been logical, I think, to include them with the only 21, 22 single-family homes along the entire stretch of Willow, because it would have been an imbalance.
Okay, nope.
Other than that, I would mention that they met all of the traffic calming qualifications as noted in the memo, and the staff would recommend approval of the resolution.
Okay, nope. Anyone else want to address this topic? Okay, seeing no one, council discussion?
Well, the only thing, very briefly, is to assuage the public's concerns on this, we're not doing the engineering work ourselves as a council. What we are doing occasionally, there are various engineering standards that we express preferences for, but we don't go ahead and do our own engineering analysis. So as councillors, we rely on the engineers to do that. And occasionally, the traffic field has been wrong on occasion in general, so they're not perfect. So these are political decisions based upon what we... exercising our judgment, but we're still following engineering standards in reaching those decisions. That's all I have to say about that.
Any further discussion? Hearing non, roll call, please.
Throgmorton.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Ma'ams.
Yes.
Solie.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item 15, Assessment Schedule. This is a resolution adopting an assessment schedule of unpaid mowing, cleanup of property, snow removal, sidewalk repair, and stop box repair charges, and directing the clerk to certify the same to the Johnson County Treasurer for collection in the same manner as property taxes. What I'd like to receive is a motion to approve minus one assessment pertaining to 1220 Louise Street.
So moved.
And defer that one to the next meeting.
And defer that to the next meeting. Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by ma'am, second by Cole.
Which one is deferring?
Discussion, I'm sorry.
Which one we are deferring to the next meeting?
Just one particular...
Did we know?
Assessment for 1220 Louise Street.
It's because that gentleman came in today and objected. And what we typically do when there is an objection is we take that one off, defer it to the next time. He'll be here to comment on it, and staff will be able to comment on it.
Is that the one that we receive on the lead?
Pardon me?
Or this is another one?
We have a handwritten...
In the lead, handout.
Yeah, that's the one? Okay. Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I did have one quick question. At the end of the list, there are like three entries for the same address at different dates. So are we saying that the city had someone do that on all three occasions?
Yeah, it'd be separate instances.
Separate instances.
Can I just really know how this is happening? I don't think our city is going around to, like, in all the street, like, what the process for, like, giving, just go ahead and do this? Do you give out warnings for this? Do you put something on the door? What exactly?
Yeah, we can certainly provide you some information on that. I don't know all the entire steps, but generally, when you're talking about snow and tall grass, it's a complaint-based system. We'll get complaints from the public. We get hundreds of them every year. And then we'll go out and inspect on those complaints. We then post it and give the property owner a period of time to take care of it themselves. If they don't take care of it themselves, the city has a contractor that we work with every year for snow removal and for mowing. We'll instruct the contractor to complete that work, and then we go back and we bill the property owners.
And this is from last year, right? Because it's snow remover, or maybe early this year?
Correct. Correct, from the winter.
Yeah, last winter.
Any further discussion?
Another, just a quick question. So then, obviously, you trust this firm, the contractor, that they have done this work? Do they have to show anything that they've been there and done?
We have picture documentation standards in our contracts. So our inspectors will go out. We don't just have the contractor go out. Our inspectors go out and verify, and then the contractor will also have to photo verify.
Anything else?
No.
No further discussion, roll call, please.
Cole.
Yes.
Ma'ams.
Yes.
Solie.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Throgmorton.
Yes. Could I have a motion to accept correspondence from Kyle Bennett, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by ma'am, second by Cole. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 16, Council Appointments. Applicants must reside now of sitting be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. We have one vacancy to fill an unexpired term effective upon appointment to the Parks and Recreation Commission, and one vacancy to fill an unexpired term effective upon appointment to the Telecommunications Commission, which we're going to act on tonight, right? So should we be acting on that right at this very moment? I think the answer is we should. Okay, so we have... Let me get my thing in front of me. So with regard to the Parks and Recreation Commission, we have, I think, five applicants for that one position with a male-gender balance requirement, which I think leaves us with, if we stick to the gender balance requirement, is a choice between, I'm going to mispronounce his name, I apologize, Penadillo Lemupa and Winter. Those are both last names. Yeah, so each of them has merit in unique ways. So do you all have a preference? Does anybody want to nominate someone?
I would say the second one. I mean, my only concern about the first individual is I've been here, like, three months. And my tendency is I like to at least see that somebody's been in the community a little bit longer than that. Not necessarily forever, but that would... Sorry.
That's a high bar.
Yeah, it's forever is a high bar. Sorry, it's getting late. Three months just seems to me like a really short time. So I was more interested in Blake Winter.
Yeah, I'd support that.
Blake Winter sounds good to me.
All right, well, there's current support for Winter, then.
I do want to clarify, though, I think his... The name I can't pronounce. His original application was in January, so... And that was at three months he'd been here. So he's been here a little bit longer since, but still, not really. And I applaud him for wanting to become involved this early on in his living in the community, and encourage him to keep an interest.
I do, too. And I would hope that Julie Seidel Johnson and others in the Parks and Recreation Commission might be able to find a way to connect with him and draw him in more and more. All right, so could I have a motion to appoint... Let's see, what's his first name?
Blake.
Blake Winter to the Parks and Recreation Commission?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by ma'am, second by Cole. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, now with regard to the Telecommunications Commission, we have one applicant to fill an unexpired term upon appointment, and her name is Kyla Patterson. Given our decision earlier, I would recommend that we appoint her to the commission. And by earlier, I mean during our work session earlier this evening. Is there any objection to appointing her?
No, I know Kyla, and I think she will be a great addition to the commission.
Okay, so could I have a motion to appoint Kyla Patterson, please? So moved.
Second.
Moved by Thomas, second by Teague. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, announcement of vacancies new. Again, applicants must reside now of sitting be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. We have one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment to the Human Rights Commission. Applications for that position must be received by 5:00 p.m. Tuesday, October 29th of this year. Announcement of vacancies previous. We have one vacancy to fill an unexpired term effective upon appointment to the Board of Adjustment.[1647.54] We have one vacancy to fill, a five-year term on the Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, and one vacancy to fill, a three-year term on the Historic Preservation Commission for the East College Street District, and one vacancy to fill, an unexpired term effective upon appointment, to the Historic Preservation Commission's Woodlawn District. Vacancies for those positions will remain open until filled. All right, we can move on to community comment, which is when we ask Austin to come up and say a few words.
Hi, there, everyone. Austin Wu, UIG City Liaison. Because I just want to start off tonight by saying I really appreciated the Play of Evolution proclamation earlier this evening. I'm also a big fan of Blown in the Wind. This week, I've been listening to Sam Cooke's version at his 1964 album, Life at the Copa. I can't say I have the same vanity pipes as the king of soul, but it's nice to hear it on the kazoo as well. Let's see. The only thing I had brought up, the plan to bring up tonight, was on the advice of the city attorney, was to bring up the previously proposed joint meeting between UIG and the city council. I'm glad to see that plan has gone underway with Deputy Charlotte Langkites. Right now, we're currently aiming at a meeting sometime in the spring semester, so probably February, March 2020, in Iowa Moral Union. I look forward to getting this set up and seeing this go through. If there's any other questions, maybe members of the council have right now, I can answer them briefly. All right, sounds good.
Anyone else? All right, so we'll move on to city council information, and why don't we start with Rockne and move to the right?
I don't have any updates.
There you go. John?
I'm chewing away on this.
You've got to be, got to be a tweet of foot.
I just wanted to mention the Horace Mann Grand Reopening, which was about as sweet and transformational an event as one could imagine. I mean, that project was decades kind of in the making, so to speak. I mean, there are lots of residents for decades who have loved that school, and in loving that school, preserved that school, and allowed this renovation to take place. I'm sorry, unfortunately, Jim was not, didn't have a chance to speak. It was kind of a five to seven event, and the speaking was finished by about 5:10. But nevertheless, it was a very sweet, wonderful event.
Susan?
I didn't get a chance to make it, but I know cyclocross was here this weekend, and they had a little bit of rain on Saturday night, so I'm not sure how the races on Sunday went. But it's just, you know, we are so fortunate to have something like that in this community that is, you know, it's part of a World Cup for a sport that isn't necessarily really big in the United States, but huge over in Europe, and the fact that, you know, they came here and keep coming back every year and bringing great audiences, and, you know, that goes out over satellite to TV to Europe for millions, I think, of people in the audience. And I think a lot of people here don't really realize how big a deal that is internationally, and for us to have that attention, you know, internationally, a small town like Iowa City, Iowa. So, you know, as we move on into the fall, I just encourage people to keep looking at the calendars and all the events going on. I mean, just saw tickets going on sale for Oktoberfest, and, you know, there's just, you know, got something the other day on plays that are coming up here and there, and so just, you know, well, coming up this coming weekend is Film Scene, because they're going to have their grand opening at the Chauncey. Unfortunately, I'll be out of town and miss it, but just, you know, there are so many things going on, just make sure you're looking at all the various places to get the calendars.
Going?
Yes, and there, there has been a lot going on. I'll try to make this quick, but I've reported on the shop crawls that downtown district has had before, and on Saturday, September 7th, they had something a little different called the Game Day Shop Crawl, which was on a Saturday during the daytime, which was really nice. And it just shows that downtown is vibrant and alive with many, many unique shops, along with places to eat and drink. And if you missed that, they do have the Fall Shop Crawl coming up on Friday, October 25th, and it's a great way to discover or rediscover what downtown really does have to offer. On Wednesday, the 11th, I attended an event with other community leaders and residents of the Gulfview Mobile Home Park, as well as guests from all across the country who shared their stories about the companies that are buying up the mobile home communities all across the country. Residents living in mobile homes are some of the most vulnerable of our community members, and I'm hoping that we, as a city, and a county, and a state, can work together to provide more protection for these individuals. And on Thursday, September 12th, as John had mentioned, the grand reopening of Mann Elementary, and just to add on to what he'd said, it just is such a great example of preserving a building of historic value while at the same time making additions and renovations that make it a great environment for our students. It's just, it's a beautiful building. Later that evening, I attended an event that was co-sponsored by the Iowa Women's Foundation in cooperation with the Iowa City Area Development Group and the Chamber of Commerce. It was a roundtable discussion titled Building Community Child Care Solutions. The Women's Foundation has been going all across the country, or all across the state, leading discussions with business leaders, childcare providers, and community leaders talking about what can be done to improve access to affordable, high-quality childcare. And it really is a big issue. They shared an alarming data, some of you may have heard this, that in Johnson County, there are 22,168 children ages zero to 12, yet there are only 9,267 childcare spaces available, leaving a shortfall of over 12,901 spaces. That's really alarming data, and if you missed it, though, again, they're having another session this Thursday at Merge Thursday evening, and I would encourage you to attend this, and I do hope we can get something. See Tracy out there, I know that's still her dream, to do that, accomplish that, and hopefully in conjunction with the county, and I too hope we can improve that. Saturday, the 14th, of course, as Susan had mentioned, the Jingle Cross World Cup Cyclocross Event. Just watching those cyclists and their strength and their endurance, it's, you know, biking that course, it's truly amazing. It's a sight to see, and I would encourage people to attend next year, because there was a great crowd and people from literally all across the country, so I hope we are asked to host it again. I'm sure we will. We didn't quite have as much mud as they hoped, they like it muddy. It was a little bit damp, but not as muddy as they like. Also, I guess, congrats to the Hawkeye football team on another great win. And then finally, the highlight, Monday, I attended a cross-country track meet for Southeast Junior High, and it was a pleasure to see Mary Ann Carr there. It was so good to see her smiling face, because she was cheering on her twin grandsons, who were also running for Southeast Junior High, so that was really fun to see her. That's all.
Bruce?
All right, last Thursday, on the 12th of September, Jones County Community Foundation moved into their new location in Corville, and that was a fun event to just see them. One thing is that they have a community conference room that is open to nonprofits, so it's a great location and great, they're welcoming people to host within their new facility. On Friday, I did get a chance to go to the Jingle Cross, and that was fun. I even saw Rockne riding his bike on Sunday.
Were you in that race?
I didn't Jingle Cross. Well, I didn't, well, I saw you on the street. I went Friday to Jingle Cross. I didn't see you there Friday.
You didn't wave, you didn't call me out, Bruce.
Yeah, yeah. And then on Saturday, Houses into Homes hosted a chili cook-off for the Iowa football game, and that was a fun event. There were 14 different chili entries, and it was rigged, because my chili didn't win. And then on the 19th, this Thursday, Reverend Bob Welsh is going to be honored for his many years of service here in Johnson County, and he'll be honored at the Johnson County Human Services, Health and Human Services Building, and that's going to be from 8:30 to 9:30 with the 9:00 AM proclamation made by the Johnson County Board of Supervisors. Bob Welsh is a person that, I'm not surprised that Johnson County want to recognize him, but he's been very influential within our community, especially elderly. On this Tuesday, on the 27th, I'm going to be driving a bus of about 12 individuals to the Capitol, where it'll be Oil, is what it's called, and it's the older Iowan legislator, where all of us will be sitting in the legislator's seats and making some decisions on proposals that we'll make for the legislation, mainly based on older Iowans' needs. And so that's going to be fun, and Bob Welsh put this all together, as only Bob Welsh can do. Sometimes he don't give you an option to go, he just tell you, you're going. And so I love Bob Welsh. And then on this Friday, as we are all aware about the childcare challenges within our community, at Merge at 8, from 8:00 to, from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM, or 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM, there's going to be a childcare summit in form that's going to be taking place at Merge, so I do encourage people to come out and just partake in that conversation.
Yes. Okay, I guess, yeah, similar, like something overlap was maybe, yeah, Pauline and I, yeah. We are, before that, on the 10th last week, we attend like training by the MH Action, which is mobile manufacturing home action. Yeah, they came, a lot of people came from around, some people from New York, some people from Michigan and Iowa, and we have that kind of training on the 11th. They really, you know, met all of us, Pauline was with us, like some elected official, county, city, and state, just discussing ways for, like, to find a solution for this mobile homes crisis. And on the 12th, no, that was work. On Sunday, I went to New York and I visited the Liberty Statue for the first time. It's really nice, and I love the story behind it, and this should be like reminder for every people who are, they're supposed to look at this. This is really impressive. I just was telling him that I should send this to the federal government, so they can understand what's going on, or remind them what's going on. Anyway, on the, on the, on Sunday, on Monday, the 16th, I went to Philadelphia, and I met with Mayor of Philadelphia, his name is Jim Tu, and he's a very nice guy, he just showed us the city. Yes, for me, it's really interesting, because, you know, the way that city function differently, like council and even the council, they have commissioner, that they appoint commissioner, and we don't have that here. And the mayor will elect the commissioner, and they are paid people, and it's really completely different. And it calls, I guess, mayor, strong, a strong mayor relationship, and we have council, strong council, which is I like. And I came today, one hour before this meeting. I've been like on the airplane from 10 o'clock in the morning and direct to here. Tomorrow, City Mayor and I are on table meeting, and on the 19th, I will attend the Film Scene opening, Susan, she's not going to be here. And on Saturday, I'm going to go to Des Moines, because I being, you know, I will be award winner for passport for prosperity on Des Moines at 6 o'clock.
Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Okay, on the 4th, Jeff, Simon, Tracy, and several other staff members and I went to the Housing Iowa Conference in Cedar Rapids, where Shelter House received an award for Cross Park Place, so bravo to Shelter House. It was really pleasing to be up there, even though Chrissy didn't have a chance to say anything. They wouldn't let any of their wardies speak. It's kind of weird. And then that same day, I dropped by C-SPAN's bus at the farmer's market, and I know you did, too. That was pretty fun, walk in and chat with those folks and do a selfie with them, you know, sort of selfies, photographs taken, that's fun. Yeah, let's see, I had an opportunity here, Van Jones speak on the 10th, and that was a pretty big crowd of people in the building out at Hancher at the same time, and he was pretty impressive. So there's that. Horace Mann Elementary, its grand reopening. John, you broke my secret, you know, that I showed up late, you know, 10 minutes. I was frankly heartbroken at my own, it wasn't a failure to get there, I just thought it was, wouldn't do, I didn't think they'd do the cutting at 5:00. I should have realized they were going to, but, so I blew that. But I want to praise the school board members, going back to Chris Lynch and Brian Kerschling and those folks, and now to the current board. So they, they and the administration have done a fabulous job with that school. I see so many beaming parents in the Northside neighborhood now, as a result of that construction project. They are really happy with it. And on that point, I want to praise our council member on the left, John Thomas, for his yeoman-like work with regard to Horace Mann. I believe, had he not been actively involved in pushing for things he thought would be good for the neighborhood, the project would have turned out very differently. And here's some particular ways. Fairchild, next to Fairchild Street, as it comes into North Market Square Park, would have gone away. The three houses on the south side of Fairchild would have gone away. The historic landmark building on the corner would not have gone away, but the district would have tried really hard to make it go away. And the design of the building itself, and how it fits on the site, is not exactly what John advocated, but it is a big step in that direction, and the best part about it is it, how well it fits in with the existing building, and that's a key reason why the parents love that new addition. They just really love it. So bravo, John. See, one other thing I want to mention is that in next week, September 25 to 27, I'll be in Dubuque, attending the Iowa League of Cities Conference, so I'm looking forward to that. That's it for me. Jeff?
Nothing for me.
Good. The owner. Can't imagine why y'all don't want to talk. Okay, good deal. So could I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Teague, seconded by Cole. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned from the formal meeting into the work session.